All right, I would like to call to order this meeting of our Lynchburg City School Board, which is actually an opportunity for us to have a budget hearing on tonight. And there is one item on our agenda that will claim our attention. And so at this point, I would like us to have a motion to approve the agenda for our school operating budget public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Preston and seconded by Dr. Carter that we will approve the agenda for our public hearing for tonight. If there are any further questions or discussion, then Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member, Ms. Preston?
Yes.
School Board Member, Mr. Trost?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
Motion, cura seven to zero.
Thank you. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance for our public hearing.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Such powerful words. We will now move into our FY 2023-24 operating budget discussion. And the school board always delights in the opportunity to have the chance to share to our viewing audience, as well as those who are in person regarding our budget, in fact, if there are comments or questions. And so to get us started, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Edwards, who will share with us our position.
Absolutely. So thank you and for the opportunity to continue to have ongoing budget conversations. And this is our public hearing, and we do like to afford the most time to the public to ask questions or share comments regarding the budget. But I will just give a quick summary of what's in our budget and just a few things that we've discussed over the past couple of months that we have been working on the budget. So our primary objective this year has been looking at our 1550 proposal, which is the $15 an hour for our lowest paid classified staff. Currently, that's $13.11 an hour. We want to increase that to $15 an hour as a step towards moving towards a living wage, not quite there yet, and also account for compression across the pay tables so that we don't find ourselves with employees making $15 an hour and their supervisors making less than that. So that's part of the proposal. We presented that. The cost of that is about $2.9 million in salary and an additional $800,000 plus in benefits. Also in our proposal for 50, the $50,000 is raising the starting salary for a 10-month teacher, entering into the teaching field to $50,000. And again, accounting for compression across the salary pay tables. And those two things, 15 and 50, we feel very strongly about. You all know there's no, there's a worker shortage, there's a teacher shortage, just employment in general. And I shared with this board where we need to be more competitive, that even in our city and even in our city government, there are like positions that pay more, hourly more than our staff. And with regard to our education staff, our neighboring divisions, I shared this last time, also pay more starting salary. So we want to retain our qualified people while also attracting highly qualified people to come to Lynchburg City Schools. Also in that proposal are three additional teachers for the middle school, a couple of things that are non-negotiables that are going to go up, like the price of fuel contracted services, and a few things that we think our employees deserve. In addition to really focusing on increasing salaries, the little things that matter, if we can reduce our reevement days from three to five to allow our staff to have more travel time, make background checks free, and also recertification free. So we have been discussing those things in our operating budget, which we continue to support. The other thing that we talked about last time was the healthcare. And we had a diagram, which is also in the budget, that outlined four scenarios, scenario A, B, C, and D. Two of those scenarios included an additional $700,000 to offset the health insurance costs. And when we discussed it last time, we figured out a way to fund that, to share costs, and actually even lower costs for some of our employees moving forward. So we have initially, when we put forward our budget proposal, it was for scenario B with a request of $47,983,634 support from the city. And after the work that the board did at their last meeting, I'm happy to report that we are now down to scenario D, which is less of a request, a reduction in that of about $700,000. So our proposal tonight, which will be on the agenda in the work session for approval, is based on our scenario D, which is $47,283,634. In there on board docs are all of the supporting documents, including information about pay tables and things that we have done in the past. And if any resident has any questions that are not present tonight or would like access to any of the documents that we have presented in the past, just email. The clerk will make sure that you get what you need. And at this time, I want to point the board's attention to the last document, which is the one that you'll actually be voting on, which has the operating budget in your board docs, is FY 24 operating budget for approval. And in that document, this is the pages that end up in the city's budget book as well. You can see on page one where we have outlined the revenues. And I just want to draw the board's attention that we did adjust our request for the city on these documents to be $700,000 less due to the change in health insurance that we discussed. So you'll see on page one that our request for local operating funds, which is in the top section, all the way to the right is the $47,283,634. And should that be approved by the board, we'll make sure that the city has the updated figures, although they are aware of the changes that we are making. The second page, again, just continues to outline state revenues. And for those of you who like graphics, there is a pie chart that shows that about 58% of our revenue comes from the state. If we were to get what we have asked for from the city, that would be about 40%. And you can see very little comes from the federal government. Again, the next couple pages, page four and five, outline the state revenues in specific categories. And again, midway down page four, you will see grocery tax hold harmless. Our budget request does assume that we will receive that grocery tax hold harmless. So in the current year, it's $815,000. Next year, it is $2 million. So that revenue is included in what we are estimating as our budget revenues. This entire budget is based on the December 16th governor's budget. You know, there's a House budget and there's a Senate budget as well, but this is based on governor's budget. Once we get the final budget, we will adjust numbers accordingly. But pages four and pages five outline by detail where does the revenue come from and what is it used for. Just a reminder that all revenue is not free revenue. Some revenue comes with a local match. And what that means for the public is the way that the state government funds us. They say, if you're going to take this, then you also have to provide a match. It's not always a one-for-one match, but there is a match to accept that revenue. And then the last couple pages, pages six and seven, outline the expenditures. And again, for those of you who like graphics, on page six, you can see that between salaries, which is personnel services, and benefits, VRS, healthcare, social security, that makes up about 87% of our budget. So as we think about big cuts, if we need to make big cuts, 87% of our budget is people. That is unfortunately how you make big cuts. But this lists all of our expenditures by major category. And on page seven, you can see our expenditures broken down by instruction, administration, pupil, transportation, operation and maintenance, and so on. And then the last page is the grant revenue. So that's everything from federal grants, Title I, Title II, Title IV, to ESER grants or CARES funding. And we know in the next couple of years, CARES funding is going to go away. It was a temporary funding source, so we anticipate that this page will be changing. And as we do our work going forward with strategic plan, we will be accounting for anything that has been funded with CARES. Either we're going to absorb it, repurpose something to keep it, or we're not keeping it at all for the CARES funding. And I wanted to leave the most amount of time for the public, so I will stop and take any questions.
All right. Any questions that anyone on the board or before us? We have our public comment section for tonight. Any questions?
I just want to hear to hear this budget, basically, we are asking the city for about 6.5 million more than the last year.
Yes. And that is mostly in compensation to not only keep up with the 5% increase that is the second year of the governor's budget, but we just, we are preserving the gap by giving what everyone else gives. And we know neighboring districts are already giving 7%, so we want to stay competitive.
Dr. Day?
I think there's a typo.
Okay.
On page five, the bottom line, total operating revenues. The next to last column, I think it should be 106923224.
On page five.
Yeah, that's our current year operating budget, and everywhere else, it's reported as 106. So.
Ms. Kabazi, can you just check on that for us? Thank you. And we will, if, we will update it and then put correct documents on here.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Dr. Brennan?
Doctor, can I just ask for a clarification? And I know we talked about a lot of numbers and you've gone through a lot. But on looking at our form that you referred to earlier and looking at scenario C versus scenario D, is the, looking at scenario C, the total revenue and adjustments grocery tax revenue, that is saying that we would get the $2 million for grocery tax revenue? Is that what that is, as compared to D, which is only revenue adjustments without grocery tax?
Hold on, let me make sure I'm catching up.
Sure.
I got the right one here. C is, should have the grocery tax removed, if I'm correct.
Because I think it's added. It looks like it's.
You told me a couple weeks ago there was a typo.
Typo, yeah. This might be the wrong one. That's, let me look and make sure that I have the right one that's on the website. Because we changed it. Dr. Day, you did point that out, that we changed it. And I remember when we first did this, scenario D was the most city favorite in terms of having the lowest one. But the actual numbers match up to 47, too. That's where we should be. So this one is not correct, because this should be 49. The one I'm looking at should be 49 was our scenario A. And then, pull it up for you. Yeah, the one that's on the website is not the accurate one. That is the one with the typo, Dr. Day. So I will take that down and put the correct one on the website, on the board doc site.
So can you clarify what the typo is?
It's just in scenarios A and C, which were currently not the ones we're pursuing.
Correct. It should have the $2 million that are removed from there. So we should be $2 million short in revenue in scenario A and C.
So that's not including the grocery tax revenue for those?
Correct, which would make our city ask much higher than those very low figures there, which are not accurate on that sheet.
So scenario D, where the total revenue was 5.2 million, that is saying that we will get grocery tax revenue?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
We're going to go down into Richmond if we have any problem, Dr. Brennan.
Good.
All right. Any further questions of the board at this time? And we've allocated an hour for this, and so we will move into whatever public comments we have in just a moment. But thank you, Dr. Edwards, for sharing what you have today. This is obviously a lot of work, and it generates a lot of questions across the way, in City Hall and other places. And I'm just thankful to our administration for being as diligent as they are in seeking to provide information to everyone that is requesting to the best of their ability. And so it looks like we have the documents here that we need, and we've heard from our superintendent. And Dr. Gupta has helped us to appreciate that our ASK ask is a little bit more than the level funding that we've been receiving in a couple of years, but we're justifying why we're going after those monies. At this point, we'll go to the public comment section, I suspect. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures, and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to their official duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit their comments to five minutes. The representative shall identify the group at the beginning of their presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. And we have allotted tonight, up until six o'clock, for this, and focusing on the budget. Now, I'm looking at my sheet here, and it appears that we have, first of all, a Richard Tugman, is Richard here? All right. And then I have a voicemail possibly from Christina Wilson. Do we have that?
Yes.
All right, let's hear what Christina wants to say to us.
Hi, this is Christina Wilson, calling because I would like to leave a suggestion for the school board for the next, I'd like this message to be played for the next school board meeting to let them know my suggestion. One, the thing that I suggest to do for the LTF schools, and maybe even possibly cheaper, is to why not give all students an ID that needs to be scanned at all entrances of school buildings? And maybe you can add those door scanners to the buildings and then take any extra money to give to the teachers as a raise for their, you know, well-deserved raises. Thank you.
Christina Wilson, we want to thank you for your input. And we've heard you and shared that in our notes. Thank you for participating in this public hearing tonight via voicemail. Distinguished members of the board, I don't see any other names here. Is anybody in the audience that would like to say something to us at this time? So we cannot start the next meeting, at least the protocol that we've been using up to now, until six o'clock, because that's what we have scheduled. Is that the pleasure of the board to continue in that manner? Otherwise, we can break until six, or you can continue to ask questions about the budget. But it's the pleasure of this board.
I may, I have one quick question.
Sure.
Dr. Edwards or Ms. Kabazi, could you explain to me how the governor's 5% salary requirement impacts our budget and our salaries?
In terms of just what we receive in compensation supplement?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and I don't want to lie, so let me get my real numbers here. So the money that we receive from the governor is for SOQ-funded positions only. That is not every position in our school division. So for example, we have assistant principals in our elementary buildings. They are not SOQ-funded. So any allocation, it's actually a funding formula, but any raise money that we receive from the governor, there is no raise money for those positions that are not SOQ-funded. And if we were to do that, then LCS has to fund them. In addition, we have to provide a local match. So the compensation supplement that we received was about $3.4 million. And in order to take that money, LCS is required to provide an additional $2.0 million, and that's just for the SOQ-funded positions. It does not include any other positions that are not, like I said, and we have several that aren't. It also does not include people who are funded by grants and Title I grants. It does not necessarily include their positions as well. So what we have done is tried to figure out a way, well, where do we get the compensation for those additional folks? And that's where we'll tighten the budget, make some reallocations, do what we can, but we do not generate any additional revenue. We are not a taxing organization to raise any money, and that's why we rely on the support from our city council.
Can you give me an idea of a ratio of the 5% funded positions of LCS that the governor is going to help us with versus the non-funded?
How many, percentage-wise?
Ratio.
Are about SOQ-funded? I would say probably about a little bit over half, maybe closer to 60% are SOQ-funded and the rest not.
Thank you.
Very good, Mr. Trost. Dr. Day?
Yeah, the budget proposal document, most of the pages has four columns. One for actual fiscal year 2022, then adopted fiscal year 2023, then agency amended fiscal year 2023, and then agency submitted 2024, which is the year we're proposing the new budget for. What's the difference between the second and third column, adopted versus agency amended for fiscal year 2023?
So this is, these are the city documents, so where it says agency. That's why it doesn't say LCS on it. So keep in mind that this would be.
So agency means city.
Well, agency means whichever agency, yes, agency.
For us, it's the city.
It's the city. But also, all of the city departments use the same format. So with regard to agency adopted and then agency amended, Dr. Waterka kind of perked up a little bit, and he probably has a better answer for that, having worked on both sides of the fence, so I'll let him take it.
Very good.
So, so, you know, as, for city departments, as the year goes along, oftentimes there's some changes in the budget. The biggest one is, for instance, the police department often gets lots and lots of grants, which we don't necessarily budget upfront, because you don't necessarily know you're going to get them. So you have an adopted budget that is X number of dollars. Then you would have an amended budget that includes every single one of those grants. And so the churn of grants that occur in the city is just constant. And so you're all, there's always seeing different amendments to various budget lines.
And so the same thing applies to us?
Yeah, absolutely. So we're a little different, because our grants are funded, we have a separate fund for the grants, so you don't necessarily see those in the operating budget as much. So you don't see those changes to the same degree, and that's just not how the city does its finances.
It is such a joy to have Dr. Waterka, who can share with us these pertinent details from both angles. Thank you, Dr. Waterka, for that very clear response. Dr. Edwards, you have anything else you want to share with us at this particular time?
I do not, but I have found the correct documents. So I'll be swapping them out on board docs. If you're watching, give me about 10 minutes to swap out on board docs so that you have the accurate documents.
You can see this is a very sharp board and detailed, and the administration is equally sharp and sharper. And so we're thankful for all of these catches. I don't know if Attorney Towns, are you on, Attorney Towns? I see her name. All I'm fishing around for is what do you all want to do? It's 5:24. We can recess until six?
Is there any, is there any business that we can appropriately discuss between now and six o'clock?
Not in the public hearing for the school operating budget, unless we're discussing the school operating budget itself, I don't believe. My memory does not recall, but I believe we used to go into a meeting if there was extra time, but we've had of recent a disdain for that. And so as chair, I can't decide which way we want to go. And so as chair, I can't decide which way we want to go. That's why I'm asking you all.
Time is precious and people are watching online, so if it's legally possible, I'm looking at the lawyers. Like to go to the regular meeting.
I don't think there's anything wrong with it, Dr. Edwards.
Yeah, typically if we have a regularly scheduled board meeting where we were expecting public comment in the second session, this is a work session, so it is the board's working meeting, and we do not have any presenters that are scheduled other than those that are already here and present. We also are videotaping this or taping it so that if someone did say, wow, I wanted to watch that at six, it will be, they will be able to get it and watch it either through our YouTube channel or on our TV channel, so there's access to it. But other than this public comment, there's no other face-to-face engagement with the public, which might influence your decision.
So the one thing I might add is if we are going to go ahead and begin the regular meeting, should a member of the public show up intending to speak to us, we would interrupt what we're doing and give them the floor.
That was very good, Dr. Day, and I can accept that. Well, then my senses tell me that the best thing for me to do is to adjourn this public hearing with the understanding if someone were to come a little later, and we would certainly indulge them and give them that opportunity. If we could take a three-minute recess, and we'll start at 5:30, maybe 5:31 if you need an extra minute, and we'll go right into our work session.
Because you...
Might try to sign out.
Or just hit the refresh button.
Okay, all right.
Now I'd like to call to order our March 21st, 2023 board work session. And boy, we have several important matters that we must take care of, so I want everybody to take a deep breath and bring your best selves to discussion tonight. With that in mind, I do want to acknowledge that our school board member Anthony Andrews will not be with us in tonight's work session. He did notify the clerk and me of his need to be absent tonight. The agenda is before you, it's been featured on board docs, and you've had an opportunity to review it. There have been no changes to my knowledge. And so what is the pleasure of the board around approving the agenda for tonight's work session?
Move that we approve the agenda for tonight's work session.
Second?
I've been moved by Dr. Carter and seconded by Dr. Day that we approve our agenda for tonight's work session. Any further question or discussion? Here and none, Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
School board member Ms. Preston?
Yes.
School board member Mr. Charles?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Senhai?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Day?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
I want to welcome everyone who's watching and with us. It is never redundant to do our pledge, and so we're going to end one more time and share these very significant words. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Section C of our agenda items, item one is pertaining to Dunbar Middle School and around fiscal responsibility of Dr. Edward.
Yep, and this is one of the things that we discussed in finance, but I'm going to ask Dr. Waterka to talk to us a little bit about PPEA.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and good evening, members of the board. To the next slide. So this is a briefing for an action that we'll bring to you again in two weeks for requested consideration. So I hope you'll forgive me in talking for the next few minutes about procurement. I know that sometimes those aren't the most exciting things, but it is important. So what we'll talk about just for the next few minutes is the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002, and some opportunities it provides LCS. And in particular, the reason we're talking about this is a project, an opportunity to utilize the tool at Dunbar Middle School. And so we'll talk very briefly about the benefits and the constraints as well. The next slide, please. So I just want to give a little bit of background on how we do construction projects at LCS and in many other school divisions and local governments throughout Virginia. So most construction projects that we do and many other localities do are a sort of traditional process of you design the project, and you go out and bid the project, and then you hire a construction company to build it. And so in that process, you separately hire an architect or an engineer, then you go out, have your plans, and then you bid the project, you hire a construction company separately to then build the project. And so in this case, there's interaction between the architect and the construction company, but it is distinctly separate. And that works most of the time, and that's a, it's a good process. It's worked for many generations and has built literally every building that we have in the school division. But there is an alternative to that. In state law, as well as LCS policy that was adopted in 2003, authorizes Lynchburg City Schools to utilize, we'll call it the design-build process, which is outlined in that act that I mentioned before, what we sort of lovingly call the PPEA. And so in this process, it allows architects and construction companies to partner together to bring forth a proposed design together as a team to build projects in conjunction with the governmental body, right? So you have your architect and your construction company talking together from the very beginning of the process, which allows some significant advantages to make sure that the project is designed correctly and that the process can go a little bit faster. So ultimately, many times that can lead to cost savings as well as time savings and, of course, addressing some design issues as early as possible. So oftentimes, you know, if you've done large construction projects, you know, as great as architects and engineers are, oftentimes there are things that just may not be practical in reality. So then you have to go back to the construction company and change the documents, and then you get, you know, change orders, and it becomes expensive and those sorts of things. So the idea is that you know those things upfront, you have all those eyes, our eyes, the construction company's eyes, the architect's eyes, on the work as early as possible so that they're all working together. So the reason we're talking about this is that we have a number of projects that are going on in the school division utilizing what we call CAREs or ESSR funds to invest in a number of infrastructure projects throughout the division. One of those projects is, of course, the Dunbar Middle School Heating System. And so the heating system, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes, but it's in bad shape and we need to make some repairs. So we've received what's called an unsolicited PPEA proposal. I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a few minutes from a local company called Southern Air, which I'm sure you all know. And the price and scope of details are not public. Again, I'll talk about that in just a little bit as well. So process going forward, LCS is now required to consider that proposal and then advertise, if the board feels that it's necessary or appropriate to accept that proposal, then you will advertise for competing proposals from other firms to do the same thing, right? So it's not, we just have somebody come to us and say, we're going to build this project for you. We offer the opportunity for other folks to bid the project as well, not only looking at the price, but also looking at how the scope is designed, of the scope of projects is designed. So the thing is, Lynchburg City Schools has never done one of these projects. We've never done a PPEA project. And in fact, the first PPEA project in the city is under construction right now. That's the Police Department Headquarters. There's a variety of reasons for that, largely just because of the personalities and leaders that were involved at the time, particularly at the city. And so there just wasn't the choice to use the tool. But lots of other school divisions and local governments throughout Virginia have very successfully used this tool, including several of our surrounding counties. And so, you know, you remember, JF was renovated, a significant renovation was done a number of years ago that used the PPEA tool. Makes a lot of sense in a lot of cases as we go forward. So we'll go to the next slide. So the project that we're talking about, as I mentioned before, currently at Dunbar, the heating system is in very bad shape. Only one of three boilers is presently operational, so if we were to have a problem with that one, we would have no heat in the building. It would be a very significant issue. It is a steam-based system. It's very antiquated, and again, is, of course, near failure. And so what we've planned to do is eliminate that existing steam system and replace it with a new heating system. And the proposal that's come forth is an energy-efficient hot water heating system. The great thing about a PPEA is that we can have a conversation about the appropriate technology with the company. So one of the things Dr. Gupta brought up during the Finance Committee meeting was concerned about that particular tool and particular technology, we can have a conversation with the architect and engineer as well as the construction company about what we want to see there, and we can make those changes before we get started. So that's a great thing, that's a great thing about the tool. The next thing is, we'll be replacing some of the pipe systems, and as you can imagine, in that building, it's a very complex system, as well as replacing some of the air handlers. And so because this project is so complex, we think it makes a lot of sense because of the age and because of the need to keep students in the school. We think it makes a lot of sense to have the architect and engineers and contractor going forth together. So here's a process, the way that it works. It's, again, a little bit different than a traditional design-bid-build. So we will receive a proposal, either solicited or unsolicited. There's a distinction there that's really more technical, but in this case, we have an unsolicited proposal. And that proposal comes in two parts. There is a concept phase and then a detailed phase, if that's necessary. So we have before us an unsolicited proposal that has two components, a public component and a proprietary component that tells us exactly what they're planning to do, what the price is, that sort of thing. That is held private because there are competing companies that are going, potentially going to look at the project. So we have that separate, and then we have this sort of public component as well. The next step in the process, if you were to choose to do this, is to accept and consider the proposal. Note, we're not saying award the proposal. We're just saying, if the school board chooses to do this, the school board is saying, we are willing to consider this or alternative proposals for this particular project. And in doing so, we need to advertise for 45 days and, again, allow the opportunity to submit for proposals. We also have, as the school division, have a responsibility to notify the city of this proposal, and they have 60 days to comment. That can be all concurrent. So we've actually already made that notification, and this allows them to have comments on, is this consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, the city's CIP? And that makes a lot of sense if you're going to build a new school, do some significant renovations. I can't imagine that there's going to be significant comments about this because it's not, there's no city money involved in this, and there's no change of capacity of the building, and there's no change of land use or anything like that. So I don't anticipate many comments, but, you know, that certainly is the city's obligation to do so if they feel it's necessary. And after receiving those proposals, both the original and the competing one, the school board can move forward with either that proposal or other, another proposal or a combination of those proposals. If you go to the next slide. Then proposals are evaluated based on our school board policy, and assuming those things go well, we would enter into a comprehensive, what's called a comprehensive agreement that's negotiated with one of the proposers. And then ultimately, city council has to sign off on this comprehensive agreement. So it's a lot of process, a lot of details. You can go to the next slide. But I wanted to provide that sort of draft schedule where we are right now. We did brief the Finance and Facilities Committee last week. We have already made the city notification, and you can see down the line where we want to go. The important date at the very end of this slide is that December 31st, 2024 timeframe, and that's when we have to spend the money by that time. And so we thought it might be better to do this process because we can, even though we have some upfront time with notifications and things like that, we felt like the design process will go faster, go simpler if we have everybody together, as well as the construction process, to move this along, particularly because it's a complicated project within an old building. an old building. And so we'll just continue to move forward with that. Go to the next slide. So just very briefly, here's some benefits on using PPEA. Again, this is kind of reiterating what I've already said, but design and construction work is completed together with the school division. The cost proposals that we have are an all-in cost. So if the firm says it's a million dollars, it's going to be a million dollars, even if there are change orders, within reason, of course. Obviously, if we want something new and different in the process, then we would have to pay for that. But as the proposal exists, anything that they would run into would be on their responsibility. And again, the time of the project will be faster. On the next slide, there are, you know, the one major drawback, I think, on this particular project is because this is not a huge project. This is not the construction of a new high school. It's not a renovation of a major school. So the dollar amount is not very high, and so I don't know how many competing proposals we will actually get, particularly because, you know, construction is still busy right now. So we'll see. And there is, you know, a fair amount of upfront cost for proposers to submit these proposals because they have to spend some time doing some early design work as well. So we'll see if we get very many competing proposals, but my suspicion is that we will not get lots of them anyway. So certainly, we'd be happy to take any questions you might have. Again, we'll bring this back to you in two weeks, ask you to consider accepting the proposal and then moving forward.
Right? Dr. Day.
So on April 4th, I'm looking at the page that had the draft schedule on it. I think it's the eighth page of the presentation here. On April 4th, we're supposed to decide, well, my question is, what exactly are we deciding? Whether we want to proceed with this whole process or not?
Yes, that's right. So you'll consider whether or not you even want to consider this or any other proposal for this particular project.
Okay. And then on the next page after this one, I want to just be sure I understand what the all-in cost guarantee means. So that kind of means that if there's some kind of cost overruns or unanticipated expenses, the firm that we're contracting with is responsible for those. They're not going to be coming to us, "Oh, we need an extra $500,000 because of this." That they're supposed to-
That's right.
-up to some level of, presumably at which they would have to come back and say, "Oh, it's going to be an extra $5 million."
That's right. So ultimately, it depends on how we negotiate the comprehensive agreement. But traditionally, PPEA projects like this have that very clear, very precise scope, and they can go into, as we get into the further design components, they'll identify a lot of the things. So again, I said, you know, if we decide we want to change to, you know, midstream to a geothermal system, you know, we would obviously have to pay for that, right? But if we go about and do the process-
So if we follow what the proposal entails as far as the type of project, the way it's going to be done and everything, then we will know upfront the cost. We're not going to be hit with something else farther down the road.
That's right.
Okay.
In some proposals, in some projects, and it depends on what kind of proposals we get, sometimes you'll have a either time or cost differential. So if the projects end up costing less money than they thought, sometimes there's a cost sharing coming back, and that just depends on what the negotiated agreement is.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Dr. Carter.
This is just for understanding, but how does someone go about, a company go about just doing an unsolicited? So do they have some awareness that there's trouble in the building, and then they say, "Okay, we can fix this"? And then the second part to that, how does the company get to decide what type, like, could they say, "We want a geothermal versus the steam"?
Yep, so great question. So, you know, the term unsolicited is a bit of a misnomer. So in a solicited proposal, truly solicited, it'd be more like our traditional request-for-proposal process. So we would say, "We have this project, let's go out for bid for request-for-proposals, and we're going to advertise," and that's going to be kind of how we start the process. An unsolicited process means that we didn't do that, but it doesn't mean that we haven't had discussions with a couple of firms that we thought might be interested. So we know the ones that are kind of doing this kind of work, that are interested. We've had some, we have had some conversations with Southern Air about this project. They've asked to see the building, so we let them kind of see that, so they could propose. Obviously, anybody that would be providing an alternative proposal would have the same access that anybody else would have, and so we'll provide that as well if necessary. And so that's sort of how the, you know, it's unsolicited, but it's not like we haven't been part of the conversation. We have been, and we certainly made it clear that we would be interested in talking through this, particularly because Lynchburg has not done this very much before. And so a lot of companies, you know, don't even consider it for Lynchburg. We're hoping, hopefully this goes well, and we continue to do it in the future projects. And I think you have a second question, and I don't-
Well, and that was the second question, but the other question is, I know there was talk when we did the Capitol Conference and went to meet with some of the delegates and the senators, that they were looking at, starting to look at the monies that were left over, remaining close to the time that they had to be used. So any, but again, it was stated that this is not something that's legal or should be done, federal dollars, the local government taking federal dollars, but it's still on the table.
Sure, it is.
Thank you, Dr. Carter.
And hopefully, if we have a, I'm sorry, if we have a contract, they will not take the money after that. That would be a big problem, so.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Chair recognizes Dr. Brennan, and then if there's anyone else who hasn't spoken, and then I do acknowledge that Dr. Day wants to speak again.
Thank you, Richard. And Dr. Wodaka, thank you very much for that nice presentation. I feel very educated and understand it better.
Very good.
I sort of agree with Dr. Day that I think on the timeline piece where it says, "Accept original proposal," maybe it should say something more like, "Accept PPEA proposal." I think that's what you're really asking us to do, is to accept this idea of doing this proposal. The original proposal makes it sound like it's a Southern Air proposal that we're voting on. So strictly simple wording, but it's a little misleading, and maybe clarify it. So a bigger question I have over this project is that, help me understand our relationship with city council, the city government, and having CIP projects. I looked back and I saw that this was one of our CIP projects on the timeline with city council in the future. I know you've had the conversation, "Do we get any credit for this? Is this something that we do, and they say, 'Thank you so much for using your dollars and not ours'?" Or how's that relationship improve based on this?
Well, I know that my colleagues at the city, our counterparts in the city, do greatly appreciate the work that my predecessors and Dr. Edwards and everyone had put in this plan, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of work being done in the school division, you know, using these funds. I mean, there's, you know, close to $10 million probably that, HVAC projects that are going into the school division that the city doesn't have to spend. And so I know that, you know, my colleagues at the city are thankful for that. It doesn't hold up bond money and other monies that we have, and so it provides other opportunities, both for important city projects as well as other important schools' projects that are coming forward. And so I think this is a very responsible plan that the school division came up with, and I'm glad to have the opportunity to help implement it, so.
And maybe just a more specific way to put that, so since we have the CARES funding, we're going to sort of take this project on for the schools as compared to previously would have been to the city's capital improvement project. Great, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Anyone who hadn't spoken yet want to ask a question regarding? I got, oh, I'm so sorry, I wasn't looking too far. Dr. Gupta, go right ahead. I got you, Dr. Day and Dr. Carter. Just trying to-
Go ahead.
Dr. Gupta, please.
I just wanted to reiterate what I said in the Finance Committee. My concern with this system, with the hot water and cold water, is the air ventilation, because the air is stale. There's a filter on the top which takes the air out. And the purpose of coronavirus money was to make fresh air, you know, air ventilation systems better. So hopefully, as we discuss the contract, there's a place to bring in fresh air for our young kids and staff and faculty in that building, because the chiller systems are old systems, you know? And there's only so much air, because when your air conditioning unit at home works, every time a unit runs, the air handling air either pulls the air from inside or outside into the building. That doesn't happen in a chiller and hot water system. So we need to make sure that there is a fresh air ventilation into the system. Second thing I had was, we had a frozen ice in the Dunbar system when the cold came. So when we discussed the scope of the project, make sure we got to have a backup generator. So this hot water will turn into cold water, cold water will turn into ice, and then we'll have broken pipes again and mold and so on and so forth. Because these systems are prone, you know, electricity is not there, there's no, because I've seen and I've experienced renovations across the river using the chiller and hot water systems, and it's just like an airplane where the, something hot water pipe is going, and, you know, it's just causing warm weather, but the air is still stale. So do you mind me anything else I mentioned there?
No, no. Just kidding. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Very insightful. Dr. Day and then Dr. Carter.
I just wanted to ask, at what stage is Southern Air in this? Have they actually submitted some initial version of a proposal?
Yes, sir. So they've submitted what we call an unsolicited proposal. So we have the proposal. We've sent it to the city for their consideration, just to get the clock started, based on our conversation last week.
Do we have, and I don't want to stick my nose into their proposal if it, to any aspect of it that might be confidential, but do we have any idea, ballpark figures of what this is going to cost?
Yeah, so that's one of the items that I can't discuss publicly. So that's part of proprietary information.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But we know that they gave us a $5,000 check along with the proposal. That's the law, and so they are putting their own money upfront. Anybody who gives you a PPEA proposal has to write a $5,000 check along with their proposal. So the more you get, the more money-
Does a firm that, whose proposal is not awarded, do they get their $5,000 back?
No.
So that's the price to play the game?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's the entry ticket. There may not be no karaoke inside, but-
So the policy says the board can't choose to refund those funds of interest.
Okay, but we're not legally obligated to.
Well, let me-
Okay, so that can be tricky, okay.
Yeah, let me, I don't know the answer to the question.
Okay, okay.
Dr. Carter.
I know we don't normally vote on items, but if we did today, they'll give us a two-week period to keep moving on with this matter instead of waiting until April 4th. If no-
Dr. Carter is raising a question to the board as to moving this to an action item tonight. Is that what you suggested?
Yes.
Nothing is in my mind that says you can't do that. I mean, this is historic in its nature. You see the timeline, I think December of 2024, is that what it is? We got to have this done. So if you'd like to put that in the form of a motion, I'm not hearing anyone object to say we cannot do that.
Yes, I move that we consider, though, do we-
Neither term is accept.
Do we accept the Dunbar PPE?
No, we asked them to move ahead, move to the next step.
All right, there's a motion by Dr. Carter that we accept the Dunbar PEA-
PEA.
Yeah, proposal. It needs a second.
I'd second it.
All right, been seconded by Dr. Gupta. All right, I want to pause for questions. Dr. Day.
I just want to clarify that the motion on the floor is what we would, what we had planned to vote on on April 4th.
Yeah.
Correct. Which is basically approving this motion is our, a statement that we want to move ahead with this approach to dealing with the heat problems at Dunbar.
Yes, correct.
All right, let me do it this way. Anyone like to speak against the motion, either from the administration or board members? All right, then, it doesn't seem like we need to have much discussion more. Then, ma'am clerk, if you please, call the roll.
School board member, Ms. Preston.
Yes.
School board member, Mr. Charles.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Senai.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Day.
Yes.
Motion carries H to zero.
All right, thank you for that, Dr. Sharon Carter. Thank you very much. All right, C3 is also an action item for before us to, wait a minute, yeah, C2 is an action item for us tonight. Dr. Edwards.
Sure, and this one is timely, and we apologize for putting it on late, but, and it is private right now until we have this meeting. But I first would like to just thank Dr. Wodaka for his work in putting together what I thought was a fantastic protocol and communication plan and everything for the EC Glass principal once Mrs. Flohr had announced that she was retiring in December, and we had a very thorough process, which leads us to today. So I just want to take pause for a second and just ask Dr. Wodaka to talk a little bit, because the public, some members of the public were involved in the process, but can you tell us a little bit about the process that was just-
So, yes, ma'am. So we were very thankful that Ms. Flohr, we're sorry that she's choosing to retire, but we're thankful for the timeframe that she gave us. She told us in December that she was leaving, going to retire at the end of the year. So it gave us a lot of opportunity to seek community feedback and try to find the right person for the job. So we spent the next couple of months talking with teachers, talking with administrators, talking with families, talking with students at EC Glass. We did that through in-person conversations in groups. We did it in one-on-one conversations for anyone who wanted to talk with us. We also had a very robust community survey. We had, I think, nearly 500 survey responses from our community, talking about what the vision is that they hope to have for EC Glass. And so once we had all that information, we spent about a month doing that, we collected all that information and crafted the position profile that hopefully you all saw. We also had a couple recruitment videos from both just the general perspective of what a great position this is and a great job, as well as we, one of our favorites we did was, there was a number of former principals that stepped forward and said, "Here's my experience as a principal at EC Glass, and here's why you should come here." And so if you haven't seen those videos, please do, they're really, really nice to see. We just know them.
No, where do we find the videos?
Oh.
Their website.
Yeah, they're on the website.
You were looking under rocks.
Yeah. So we spent a lot of time doing that, and hopefully, we went far and wide, and I think we went through a great interview process, and I'll turn it back to Dr. Edwards.
Yes, so our interview process included staff members, teachers, included parents, alumni. We went through roughly about three rounds, if we want to count each round somewhat separate, from applicants down to about five in-person interviews. And then in round two and round three, we took the top two candidates, and they were interviewed by myself and a team, and then a team of EC Glass staff members independently of us, which was nice. And then we all got together. So we are now here where we have the great reveal or the announcement as to who the next leader and champion for EC Glass is. And I am pleased to announce that that next EC Glass principal is Dr. Danny Rule. We know Dr. Rule because he is a very experienced principal and has been an experienced principal here in Lynchorn, experienced principal in Lynchburg City Schools, having worked at Desi Darrington, and also taken on Dunbar in the last couple of years, and now will be taking the helm at the high school. The beauty of that is, as our babies enter into high school, he knows where they came from when they were in elementary school, what they experienced in middle school, and now what the and beyond plan is for them as they enter high school and then leave high school. So we're very excited to work with Dr. Rule in this new role. And there's a half smile, because as much as I'm excited to fill that position, I'm looking at my HR folks, he is currently the principal of Dunbar Middle School. So we have some work to do there in finding our next leader in Dunbar Middle School. So we will have a series of press releases and discussions coming up, a lot of strategy planning. It's a great time as we go into our next strategic plan, and he's entering at the right time. So congratulations, Dr. Rule.
All right. Do we simply need to approve the human resources report?
You do, and I'm moving that up from private to public so that you may vote on it.
So vote.
All right, we've got a- All right, we've got a motion from Dr. Gupta, seconded by Dr. Carter, that we approve the human resource report as presented to us tonight and to further questions or discussion on the motion. Hearing none, ma'am clerk, please call the roll.
Scoop up member, Ms. Preston?
Yes.
Scoop up member, Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
All right, so, Dr. Edwards, congratulations have been extended, and I know all of that's going to get out to our public. And we're looking forward to seeing the great work that's going to happen there at EC glass. All right, very good. We will now move to C3, and this is an update for us tonight. Dr. Edwards, if you could help us to appreciate this.
So one of the things that this board is committed to doing is using our work sessions to actually do work, learn work, learn more about data, ask questions, and dig deep. And we have had very fruitful work sessions from the beginning of the year. I think every work session, you all had a packed agenda. And now that we are in March, we are going to take a human resources dive deep with Mrs. Scott and Mrs. Watts, who are our HR director and senior generalist, who are here to share with us some HR information and answer questions.
Good evening, members of the board. So we are excited to present a human resources update. Thank you, Dr. Edwards, for that. In the presentation, we will cover staffing, retention, and proposed pending budget request for school year 2324. And now I'll turn it over to Victoria.
All right, so as we move on to our next slide, you will see, as Lucretia has already shared, we are hiring. So we are currently hiring for both instructional and non-instructional positions, as you'll see on the next slide there. These are a general synopsis of our openings across the division. We are hiring for teachers at both levels, counselors, librarians, IAs, bus drivers, custodians, substitutes, and more, in addition to our occupational therapists. And we're really excited as we have just opened up our summer opportunities for our students here in Lynchburg City Schools. As we move into the slide following this, so far for the 2223 school year, we have hired 354 contracted employees in addition to 69 building and long-term substitutes. And we're now moving into our current vacancies across the division. So as far as our teachers, we have openings at the elementary, middle, and high schools and our alternative programs. And you can see the numbers there in regard to those at each level. We are also continuing to hire for our bus drivers. And again, you can see we have summer opportunities available. Our math, science, and special education, not only in Lynchburg City Schools, but also just across education at this time, continue to be our hard-to-fill areas, but we continue to work to actively fill those. All right, so some of the things, what are we doing to continue to address our teacher vacancies? At this current time, as you can see in the earlier slide, we continue to recruit and hire some substitute staff until we can get the contracted staff in place. For those teachers who are going the extra mile, we offer to compensate them to teach an additional period in their day. And we have also worked with our retirees to come and join us back at LCS, whether that be in a part-time capacity or full-time. We have also seen where we've been innovative with restructuring our classrooms in addition to reassigning teachers within the division to help address those classroom needs. So some of our hiring events for school year 2324, so as we look to address our current vacancies, we are also getting started early hiring for the next school year. We have hosted an internal career fair. The nature of that was to offer opportunities to our current staff who may be seeking a change in location across the division. So they had the opportunity to come out, meet with the administrators or supervisors of the location or the department that they were interested in, and just have a discussion about their interests as we move forward to next school year, which also aids in our retention. So what that means is we offer them an opportunity to speak with those managers so that they may move to another position, but they still stay with us here at LCS. We also have hosted our LCS Education Career Fair. So this is our second annual event where we had all of our schools and departments represented at Heritage High School on a Saturday morning, and this offered an opportunity for the public to come out, learn more about the different cultures at each school, talk with that administrator or their team, and talk about what opportunities can await them for next school year. And then we have also continued to host our teacher interview days. So what this helps us with with the teacher interview days as we consider school year 2324 is we continue to interview applicants on a rolling basis. Pretty much as those applications come in, we connect them with a teacher interview day. If they are out of state, they have the opportunity to participate via Zoom. Or if they're in-state, they can come and have an in-person interview. And those panels consist of our leaders across the division. So whether someone is a supervisor, a teacher leader, or an administrator, they help us continue to get those applicants interviewed and hired for next school year. All right, so in addition to that, we have continued our college and campus university recruitment. We have visited several schools so far this year, and we have a few more on the calendar wrapping up. Our team was out at Liberty University today. So these events have been are pretty awesome. We continue to take those candidates and get them in front of admin for interviews. Let's see here, and I just wanted to add that these, at these events, we typically see an average of about 15 qualified candidates. And then many of those are seniors who are graduating for next school year. And so again, those are the ones we are connecting with our admin team to get them interviewed to consider for next school year. So this is just some of the photos to tell the story about our college campus recruitment. This is oftentimes, it gives us a chance to meet those candidates one-on-one, tell them the story about Lynchburg, tell them the story about Lynchburg City Schools, and then get to know us to continue not only just trying to hire those seniors, but to build those relationships and build the pipeline as we look forward to upcoming school years. These are a few pictures from the Education Career Fair. Thank you to those of you who were able to come out. We appreciate that. And as you can see, our administrators are a very spirited team, so we really appreciate them. They all came out, they set up their table as a reflection of their school. And as you can see, Dr. Deals in her Jaguar jumpsuit. So our payroll and benefits team, and then also Ms. Anderson with Heritage High School. So it's a really great time for all of our staff to get together, but also just so people can come in and meet that admin one-on-one and talk to them and ask them questions about the culture and the environment at their school. All right, and I will now pause. I know that was a lot of information in a few minutes before we go to Lucretia, if there are any questions. Yes.
Excellent report. I'm just intrigued. I saw Howard and Virginia State. Where are the schools where there's the best chance of getting potential teachers that you all are aware of that HBCU related?
So this is our first year really interacting with our HBCUs. One thing to note is that all of the schools that we visit do host educator preparation programs. So they all have programs that are approved by the VDOE. VSU, this is our second time visiting them. They don't have as many education majors. And then Howard, we're going to them, I think, in April, so we can give you an update on that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions that Dr. Gupta and then Dr. Well, Dr. Carter, please. Dr. Carter, then Dr. Gupta.
I just wanted to follow up with the same question Dr. Coleman asked. So some, you didn't list all of the colleges that you've gone to.
So these are all of the ones that we have gone to this year, and then some of those, like Liberty was today, Howard is coming up, and ODU is coming up as well.
So just wanted to just plug for Sweetbry and Randolph College and Virginia University of Lynchburg.
Yes, so typically, because they're smaller colleges, they typically host like a unified event. Last year, they canceled that event, and I don't think we've received an update of how they want to move forward. But typically what they'll do is they'll send them to like University of Lynchburg because they have a fair. But we can get back to you on what they actually decided to do this year.
Thank you, Dr. Carter.
And actually, and just as an update, we did have a Sweetbry candidate from that came to the University of Lynchburg event. So I can give you a specific update, though.
I had two more suggestions, since you're going towards ODU, Hampton and Norfolk State. Now, Dr. Coleman will not mention Hampton, President is his best friend. Hampton is a big school, you know, it's small, it's not a small private school. Norfolk State is a pretty decent-sized school.
Yes, Norfolk State was on our list to visit, but those are really competitive events to get into. So we had them on our calendar, but we couldn't get in. So we're know next year, we got to be right on, as soon as they send a notification out, we got to get right in there. But it is on our radar, and then we will know Hampton as well.
And how about, I'm sorry.
And A&amp;T is a hard one to get to.
Other big school, like you mentioned, Radford and Virginia Tech, do they have a similar?
So we did go to Radford, and when we spoke with Virginia Tech, they told us that that specific fair that they hold, we wouldn't get as many education people and that they actually send their education majors to Radford.
And this is really rich information. So let me ask you this. So can you make acknowledgement of interest to participate this far in advance for next year? These schools where it's highly competitive to get into their.
Yeah, so we try, and that's why we try and build those relationships with their the event organizers as well. So we always tell them, hey, keep us on our list, keep us updated so that we can participate with you. Sometimes what they'll do is they'll offer a fall event that might be a little bit smaller for their December graduates, and we'll try and catch that in addition to catching the spring. But usually those, the events for the spring come out the latter part of the fall, early part of the winter. So we try and stay right on top of it as soon as it comes out. But we do ask them to keep up, keep them, keep us on their mailing list and on top of their notifications.
Yes, Ms. Preston?
Do you just, do you just recruit schools in Virginia?
So we, last year, we did both in-state and out-of-state for this spring. We did focus a lot on the colleges and universities here in Virginia. But in the past, we've done Appalachian State. We have worked to get into North Carolina A&amp;T. We did Morgan State last year, so as in last fall. So we have, but this particular spring, we did focus on those right here in Virginia.
Okay, because I have several relatives in North Carolina that are in college, so.
Okay. Well, and I would, I would open up to that. So, you know, if you all have relationships at colleges and universities, we can always try and maximize off that relationship, say, hey, put us on your list, we'll nudge them a little bit, so.
Helps when you know somebody, that's that's true. The other, one of the other things that you talked about was that there were some retirees that have come back to work. How many retirees have returned?
So I would have to get back with you on that specific number, but we do have a couple that have returned to us.
Okay, interesting.
And some of them are subbing as well.
Okay, interesting, thank you.
All right, you all can continue. Doing well.
All right, so employee incentive, we have the Ainsley incentive, so I just wanted to share some information about the Ainsley incentive. So the Ainsley Family Foundation is a champion for public schools. They are passionate about their retention of great math educators for the success of our students. They continue to make an annual monetary commitment that provides an additional $10,000 retention incentive to two exceptional math educators. The incentive is paid over two years for an additional three years commitment for LCS. Okay, more information will be forthcoming for the school year 2023, 2024 application process. Our tuition assistant reimbursement program is very vital. It encourages our staff to develop skills that will benefit our school division. Also, the program aid in retention. All right, and then the fabulous Day of Wellness, based on our responses last year, we had great responses. So we want to continue our partnership with the Education Foundation for our next experience. This slide shows you our Ainsley incentive recipients. So Andrew Nap, Nap, Naprikowski, I'm so sorry. He is the math teacher and department chair at Heritage High School. And Emily Davis is the math chief, math teacher and department chair at EC glass high school. So they are recipients for this school year. So excited for them, yes.
You said this this Ainsley incentive award.
Is that $10,000 each?
Mm-hmm.
That's a juicy award, that. Oh, your hat in the ring.
Yes.
Another retirement.
Dr. Brennan would like to share.
I just want to give a brief comment because the Ainsleys are tremendously generous to Lynchburg Public Schools and don't take any credit for what they do. So I would just like to put a pitch in. They have made this contribution, they've made a scholarship, I think, to the Beacon of Hope.
Beacon of Hope.
It also has to do with teacher retention. They have done a phenomenal, they have made phenomenal contributions to Lynchburg City Schools. And I just want to say publicly, I know that the board appreciates that. But they never, they stand in the shadows, they never come out of the shadows. We just want to pull them out one time. But it really is phenomenal thing that they have done for our schools to retain our teachers and bring in new teachers.
And we had the opportunity to meet the family, and they are wonderful.
Thank you.
Next slide. All right, so exit reason for leaving for school year 19 and 20 and school year 2021. So for school year 19, 20, we had a total of 137 certified staff resignations. And listed below is the reasons for the resignations. So as you can see, retirement, we had 26, personal relocation, 26. And I did have a typo for other, it should be 22. So I will update that slide and get back with you on that. And then the next top one is the accept another teaching position, which was 21. All right, for school year 2021, we had 148 certified staff resignations. So we had 34 accepted another teaching position, personal relocation was 20, and then retirement, 21, and then other was 27. Yes. Dr. Gupta?
So when you say other, do they specify the other, like I'm not happy with the principal or the superintendent is too nasty on me? What's the other reason?
Unfortunately, no. It was just other when I was looking at the data this morning.
But most of these things are very positive, and nothing wrong with being positive.
Right.
But, you know, you hear all these things, but they are not showing up on the survey. So is that all in that other section, that that was, those were not the choices in the survey? You know what I'm saying? They respond to the questions presented to them.
So the exit questionnaire is new for this school year that we curated. So this data is for 19 and 20 and 2021, so we didn't have a questionnaire back then. So I just had to look at previous data, and they just had other.
So but to address your question, one of the things proactively, because we don't want to wait till they leave us and say, did you say superintendent was nasty? We don't want that to happen, so. Shouldn't superintendent be nasty? I would hope someone would let her know ahead of time so I could stop it. And one of the things that we're working with our employees is on that working condition. So when they do share with us some of the things and one of the reasons why they put an internal career fair, they may just say, listen, it's it's not my fit at where I am, and I'd love to explore other opportunities because I love Lynchburg City Schools, and we try to make that happen. If there are other concerns, we try to address them as soon as we're made aware of them so that we preserve that positive working environment to the degree that we can. But we understand sometimes it's just not a right fit wherever you are. But, you know, we've got 22 schools and programs and a whole bunch of stuff. So we definitely follow good to great, get the right people on the bus, and then put them on the right seats once they're on the bus. So we hope we'll see less of the I'm leaving because of, you know, the the relationships or or those types of things. We hope we see less, period.
Yes.
But definitely less due to those types of things.
Dr. Brennan?
Oh, I'm looking at your numbers here, and it looks as if they're, the reasons are mutually exclusive based upon the count. So I'm just curious, is there any way to identify if they are overlap? For instance, personal relocation, 26, accepting another position, when I'm looking at the next, next one, 34 on 21, 22 school year. I wonder if they're accepting another position because it's more money or accepting another position because. I'm, I wonder if they're accepting another position because it's more money or accepting another position because of personal relocation. Do you only give them one, one option to pick when they, as a reason for exiting? Or can they rank it, or is there a combination of reasons they're leaving? You follow me?
Yes, so this, they, this is last, like, couple years ago, so we didn't have where they can specify. But going forward now, yes, they can.
So for school, so, okay, so for school year twenty-one, twenty-two, your next slide, I was just looking at other there, fifty-six, other teacher positions, thirty-four, personal relocation, twenty-eight. Just cause I have some, a personal experience that people said, hey, I, I did a personal relocation because I accepted another job in this district because it paid more money. And I just wanna make sure that we're able to capture that data appropriately. I don't think, based upon history, that we're able to capture that, that amount of detail, correct?
Correct, and I'll go back um for this, this questionnaire and just make sure we capturing that data going forward.
I agree, thank you.
Does it, does the new questionnaire ask for their top?
Yes.
Reason, which it didn't before, it was, but now we do want the, like, what's the number one reason that's motivating you, even though there may be other factors?
And do we have the opportunity to capture the other factors that are involved?
I believe it asks for their top three.
Top three.
Gives them the list of reasons, we can verify that and follow.
Dr. Brennan?
I just wanna make a, a general point, having been on the board for a while, that this is information that we've asked for, for a long time. And thank you very much for putting it together. The original slide we had in our packet just had the twenty-two, twenty-three, the forty-seven resignations, which was really hard to distinguish. So you all were nice enough to go back and what was asked was that, which you did, was to go back to nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two to look at the COVID era. To really sort of get a little better feeling because it clearly is different reasons for leaving. And I think the fact that, you know, accept another teaching position and retirement are two of the high things, probably what we have heard, that people retired because they decided they just wanted to do, deal with COVID more than previously. And, or they went to another teaching position for other reason, maybe salary, which pertains to what we wanna try to do with our budget. So I think this is very helpful information and thank you so much for going back and, and, and looking at and presenting to us in such a concise way.
And, and it also gives you an opportunity to, to address the things that really are problematic. Because on the, I think it was the previous slide, not this one, but on the previous slide, it identified that uh a s- small number of people left to accept higher paying positions in nine, in nineteen and twenty. A larger number left um to take higher paying positions in twenty twenty-one. I would think that that was information that was used by you when you developed the, the idea of, of raising, significantly raising the, the, the teacher pay.
That's good supporting evidence, uh, school board, uh, member, uh, president. Make sure that we still note that, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, for our board side ammunition, very good.
Thank you, next slide?
Oh, wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
Is that Dr. Carter or Dr. Guta?
I'm sorry.
So going forward, do we have on there for other to explain or to provide more information so we can capture that, what the other is?
I would go back and look at the questionnaire, I'll, what I would do is also email you all the questionnaire as well, so you have a copy of it, how about that?
That's a great idea.
That'd be great.
Okay.
That was my concern because fifty-six out of one eighty-five, it almost more than thirty percent are others. So they are hidden under the carpet and I hope it's not the dirty stuff which is hidden under the others. Because it's all, uh, looks pretty decent, you know, you move because of salary, you, but the world, what culture, which was the issue which we, we wanted to a survey before, uh, has, has not shown up any of those issues. I'm assuming they are not there, but if they are there, my only fear is I hope they are not under that other category. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes, it makes sense.
Dr. Sina knows better than survey than any one of us, but, am I stating it in the?
I think so, yeah.
All right, very good, all right, you all can continue.
Next slide? All right. So this, this slide provides, um, you teacher resignations um through the years of fourteen, fifteen to, or through twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three by percentages. So this is like um division, over the division wide, teacher resignations, and we did percentages.
So uh eighteen, nineteen was twenty-four, is that, or, we're two of them.
So eighteen, nineteen was twenty-three point six percent. And then eighteen, nineteen was um twenty-four point one, nineteen, twenty was seventeen point five percent. And then twenty twenty-one was twenty percent, and then twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two was twenty-eight point seven percent. And then so far this year is um ten point seven percent.
Is that percentage of our total teaching staff, what, what is that a percentage of?
It's the percentage of um the staff in, in the school, right, Chuck?
Yes.
Yes, okay, yep, staff in the school.
So, so we're doing a, a, a twenty-eight percent turnover on our staff or teachers?
Teachers.
Year, geez, wow.
That's a lot.
That's a lot, and there's a lot of hidden cost involved in retraining, yeah.
But I would think there's also the value of being able to look at it, for example, and we say, well, Gloria's school that she's the principal at is losing fifty percent of, of her staff, but uh Dr. Gupta's only one percent left. That's a way of identifying what challenges exist in those, in, in the school so we can make some changes, whatever that, whatever that happens.
Exactly.
So that's valuable information.
Right, and, and this is our um first year, like, looking at this data, but you are, you are exactly right, um, Mrs. Preston.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a.
Next slide?
Okay, no, no, you go right in, appear.
All right, um, so this um, in this slide, you can see resignations, teacher resignations by location for school year fourteen, fifteen through school year twenty-two, twenty-three. Like I said, um, and like Gloria Preston just said, too, Mrs. Preston said, um, this is our first year looking at the, um, this data at this level. I mean, there could be several reasons that impact this data, yeah.
Yeah. I just wanna digest that, but I'll do that, I mean, that's.
More attention.
And, and it, like you said, it's very essential that we retain our teachers.
All right, questions, uh, Dr. Carter, Mr. Trove?
I think we have to be careful how we interpret, just because there's a large turnover, it doesn't necessarily mean that there's a problem at the school. There could be a number of factors.
Right.
Well, also, or.
Or the population, student population, or the challenges of, so, you know, we have to.
You need to examine.
Yes.
Exactly.
Yes, but there could be a lot of factors.
I know you wanna interrupt, but again, this is, this is not a school transfer. These are leaving the LCS education system by school.
Yes.
Wow.
Well, there's a narrative to all of this and I guess, you know, we'll figure it all out, but you've got the information in front of you.
This, this particular page or slide, was that added to your presentation just recently?
Yes, that was added um this morning when I was working with Chuck, yes.
Cause it's not in the version I downloaded yesterday.
Okay, yes. Tina did an update.
That's not a criticism, I'm just trying to understand why.
Good data.
Dr. Guta?
I was just looking at it, so when a school, uh, to me fifty percent threshold is where, you know, it's concerning. So fifty percent of resignations are coming from a particular school. Uh, does your department or somebody goes there and have a conversation, why is it happening, to figure out the root cause?
Yes, we want to.
But there is a school which stands out, has the highest, almost fifty percent resignations.
Yes, and we wanna be, um, doing that, yes, sir. Having those conversations with those administrators.
And, and I would agree, like, look at the data, take it in, but don't, you, there's only so much you can conclude without unpacking the data. Take a small school that has two grades per uh level, twelve teachers. The percentage for individual teachers is much higher than, take EC Glass, which has many more teachers. So we just have to be careful in how we're interpreting percentages. The other thing that we, that are factors in here are licensure and how, if we can keep them. So, you know, staff have, we, we've worked real diligent with them to try to help them get their license, but if they don't pass the praxis and there are some other factors um that come into play that we have to look at. Um, and then there's always, um, we, we like to look at hiring as um a marriage when we, when we have a new candidate in front of us, uh, especially during this time when we have a worker shortage and um high competition. So it's a factor of what are the talents that this person brings and what is the skill set that I'm gonna have to develop? And do I have the capacity to develop that skill set for that staff? So you'll see, some buildings are very veteran, where there's a lot of capacity for, everybody around me is helping me. And some buildings are very novice, where I don't have enough uh resources to, to help us. So as we look at it, before we go in, you can imagine being a principal seeing this, before we go in with the, the judgment first, we really try to isolate, what are the questions we should be asking and what is the data? And more importantly, what does that mean for us at central office? So if we do have buildings that are very novice staff, well, maybe we shift our resources to provide more support. So sometimes when we're thinking about equal and equity, when you look at schools and how they're, how they function, some schools need more support than others do um in a given year, that may, that may change, so. But I'm glad and, and kudos to HR and kudos to Mr. Yarborough, who's back there, who is really doing a lot with data all over the place between student scores and, and there's no shortage of work for, for Chuck unfortunately, because we all have data that we want him to crunch for us. But we're just happy to start this conversation.
Kudos to you, the administration numbers have gone down. In fifteen, sixteen, they were sixty-six point seven, and it went down to zero after a year of you taking over. My concern was coming, and I'm jumping the gun the next slide, which, which basically shows what I was referring to in terms of percentage, one school jumped from twenty-five percent to fifty percent. Year over year, they were only twenty-four, twenty-five, and suddenly fifty percent resignations.
Now, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna, put the next slide up there so he can see what you was talking about, okay?
Dr. Carter, I just wanted to say something.
Okay.
And I see some of these are associated with the change in principals.
Yes, and that could be.
You know, it just goes right along with the, when the principal's been there a long time and they leave, it seems like there's a big exodus.
Looking at the numbers is only the beginning step.
Right, that's why, so we shouldn't put two, there are a lot of things we have to look at, yes, there are a lot of.
To be specific, Dunbar Middle had twenty-eight percent, twenty, twenty, is it twenty-eight percent, twenty-eight percent, then jumped to fifty percent in twenty-one, twenty-two. Was there a change of principal at the time? I'm not aware, uh, I don't know.
But I know like R is pain, there was a change in principals during, during that time. And this not saying anything to the new principal, but there's a change, a lot of times the teachers will leave.
And we also have to factor in retirement, so, just, and we know we have a lot of baby boomers. We, we know we have a, a group that has been committed to Lynchburg City Schools for a very long time. I mean, we see that with twenty, thirty, and forty years. And in buildings where you do have a very veteran staff, often they're also the ones who are retirement ready. And we know COVID helped folks make that decision um to retire. So I'll be interested in digging deep um as we unpack the data to see how much of that is in there.
And on this slide, it's pretty much the same data from the previous slide. I just pulled out the year of COVID, which was nineteen, twenty, and then the two years after, which was twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, per Dr. Brennan's um request. So it's the same data from the last, um, previous slide.
Dr. Brennan?
So I just wanna kind of reiterate what's been said already, which I think this, you know, we haven't really had a chance to see this data before. And I'm not sure how well it's really been scrutinized and, you know, for example, if you look at the, you know, the um, the, the, the second slide, we think is up there, you know, the column to the right is not an average, it's just adding the percentages together. So it's very misleading and, and I'm not sure what the resignations, if it's just teachers or it's just staff. I'm sure someone would have to look at that to sort that out.
It's just teachers, Chuck said it's just teachers.
So Chuck, do you wanna make any comments about this as far as the data goes, cause it's sort of, help us interpret it or help us, give us a background?
Forgive me if there are any errors in here, they're mine, I created all this, we were working very quickly.
Sure.
Got several departments with some pressing issues.
Sure.
Um, I think really what this tells us is that it shows the impact of COVID because if you notice that first year of COVID, the numbers dropped. And I think because when everybody went home and nobody knew what was going to happen, nobody was willing to risk moving or doing anything and putting their job in jeopardy. And then those numbers started to climb, the second year of COVID, we only had half of our students. Discipline was down by ninety percent because we didn't have that many kids in. So there, when she says, we've gotta take this and then start to triage backwards, there's so much that this doesn't tell. If a building picked up a program that might have caused them to pick a couple more teachers, that's gonna, you know, kindergarten may be dropping off, there's so much there. This is just an initial point as far as trying to get a, a better way of looking at it. But we're gonna clean up the process quite a quick bit because there are coaches that serve multiple buildings and we didn't have a really good way of sorting how we would account for those in terms of holes versus partials, so. To answer those initial questions, what, what else can I answer for you?
More to come.
Yeah, I, I think this is a really good point, but which to, to recognize some good trends. Let's not lose the fact that some of these numbers are really good um and have been for a while. And so I think that speaks to some of the leadership as well. We had an overwhelming number and I think it's another slide you're gonna see where we break down who left by how long they had been here. And that tells a, a, an interesting point as well, but I'll.
Dr. Carter?
And I would suggest that we take the lower regionals program off unless we add the GOV and STEM.
Okay, okay, thank you, I will do that. Next slide? All right, so lastly, this data um provides the teachers data by years of experience. So um as you can see, um, employers are leaving LCS that has like nine or more years of experience.
The different colors correspond to different years.
Yeah.
Experience levels?
Yes.
Yes, so the red is one, the blue is zero. Shades of blue, yeah.
Yeah, just so you're aware, the, the data only goes back nine years because we switched our systems. And so I only, I only know, I, all I can say is they have been here for longer than nine years. But if you take the nine years and then people that had one year or two year in, that in some cases equals, you know, anywhere from forty to seventy percent of the people we lost. So we had a lot of people who I think, like Dr. Edwards said, had kind of reached the end of their career and I think with COVID and everything else, they thought, this is probable, I've, I've done my time, I'm getting out. And then, you know, the, the increased pressures of all the things related to COVID really put a big dent on, on our newest people. But I think that points to something we can work on, is to say, how do we build better supports around our, our brand new teachers? And I know there's some things in the, in the works to address that specifically.
I think that's a, a really good point because for me, using the data to identify concerns is an opportunity to address those concerns rather than to just look at what's wrong. Cause you can always find something wrong, but, but now, now that we see that we're having a difficulty in this area, how do we address this?
And where are we doing it right, that we need to take those ideas and expound on it?
And share it.
Cause sometimes we're so crisis driven because of the nature of the way things work, sometimes we miss the obvious, and, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
I think this is a good starting point.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, next slide? All right, so now we're going to transition to talk about um some proposed um incentives for the school year twenty-three, twenty-four pending budget requests. Um, so the first one is background check, ex, background check expenses to be covered. Um, also um recertification fee expenses to be um covered, and then increase remit days from three to five, and then increase sick day out, overtime from ninety to one-ten, and increase um substitute pay. So the, um, those items are in um the budget for um next school year.
All right, Dr. Carter.
And I thought we had covered those, a lot of those items in our last budget, I guess we, we didn't.
We didn't vote.
We didn't vote for them, how could we not have voted for them?
No. So that concludes my presentation.
Dr. Guta?
You know, Ms. Carter, you're doing an excellent job, so you, since you have come on board, you're providing more and more information and digging through all the piles and piles of data. So just wanted to acknowledge what you're doing and your staff are moving in the right direction.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Guta, we all shared the same um sentiments, and so thank you, um, that's, that was very detailed. And, and I also appreciate how. That's, that was very detailed and, and I also appreciate how candid you were with responding to the questions throughout the entire report. And I think we're in good hands and, and we're making the steps in the right direction. So thank you very much. Dr. Gupta, one more thing?
She always does with a smile, which is irregular for an HR department.
That's right.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, well said, well said. Thank you both, Chuck, all of you. All right? Now, board members, we are at, each of the items prior have been critical as well, but now we are at C four. And tonight is our night. Now before we get into C four, if I am correct here, this is for action. I, I sometimes make statements that I should not, but I will make them statements one way or the other. I do wanna thank the administration for the manner in which you seek to entertain the robust questions that you get all over the place, which lets us know axiologically that you value every sector of the public, whether they are elected officials or not. And I think that is incredible. I do want the board to know that as you're asking your questions and as they're sharing tonight, that they've been under great fire with a lot of questions that they've responded to. And so just keep that in mind and I'm very proud of the administrative team for bringing this to us in our previous discussions, but tonight, we gotta act on this. So Dr. Edwards, lead us on.
So first, we so appreciate you all in helping us keep it right and we have found the correct budget document. Thank you to Dr. Day. So Mrs. Spinner brought down hard copies of what should be coming down to you all, all right, which has the correct scenario versions of that, so.
What happened?
It got stuck somewhere?
Oh.
I didn't wanna be rude.
Just grab it.
So I just, I wanna cycle back, make sure we're all looking and I put the date on top, three twenty-one, twenty-two-three, so that we would all make sure we're looking at the right thing and that we are truly transparent as you are voting. So just to reiterate what we said, Scenario A, which is a request for forty-nine, nine-nine-nine, nine-six, twenty-five, oh, six-twenty-six, that request was based on us, including an additional seven hundred thousand dollars for the health insurance and also us not having faith that we would have that grocery tax part of it. So it's a decrease in the revenue as well as an add, which was the most expensive scenario that we proposed. The good news is we've landed on the least expensive scenario that we've proposed, which is Scenario D, thanks to the work of this board and working through finance and last time on health insurance and also thanks to many people, delegates and our legislative officials who are working to rectify that error, that CAULT tool error on our behalf. So we're very hopeful for that. So we do have the correct figures. I have updated board docs if you are watching in the public. The correct documents are in both the work session and the, yeah, budget hearing so that we're all looking at the same thing, which now brings us to any additional questions about the budget before the board votes. And let me just remind the board that by code, we have to adopt a, the school board has to adopt a budget before April first, but we are still in budget talks with city council. We have a meeting next week, joint meeting, and our budget does not become official until the city's budget becomes official. So while we are adopting one tonight, the official budget is once the city's budget is official.
Which, which is, is, is another way of, another way of saying it is that once the local effort is determined and everything else is trued up, then we'll have to make decisions on what those figures look like before the operating budget is completely finalized. And somewhere in that process, from time to time, Dr. Carter just alluded what I thought that these things were in and I did as well. So when we get to that point, we do have to make sure that we understand those dynamics. Dr. Gupta?
You can move your seat, sir.
Well, well, what, what, let me not forget. I do wanna honor the finance committee chair or the finance committee if there's anything that I would like them to lead with anything from finance, anything that was discussed or anything that, I know we're all talking, but I do wanna yield to, to give you that opportunity if there's anything you wanna share and then anyone else. We're gonna hear from everybody, of course. Do you, do you have anything?
No, it's pretty much spelled out in here and what Dr. Edwards has presented. I mean, once you get through the salary increases and, you know, the essentials that are on there, you get where we are, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Unlike prior years where we did a lot of vetting of very many requests, this one's pretty straightforward.
Okay, very good. Dr. Gupta, Dr. Carter?
So I attended a session by city manager where he presented the key, Mr. Winter presented the key highlights of his budget. So for the public who is listening, he was proposing a minimum wage of twenty-one dollars for some of the city departments. So I stood up there, Dr. Brennan was there and I said, what's wrong? Have our people done if you propose a fifteen dollar, which is six dollars an hour less than the proposal in a couple of departments in city? And I don't know what the hourly wage in the other departments are. So in my personal opinion, we should not be treating, have a step child treatment for LCS employees where fifteen is too high, but twenty-one is not high enough. And so that was my argument there. I am in support of fifteen-fifty and as I've said, Dr. Edwards, before, this adding these three positions to the budget is troublesome. In light of that, we have three point two million dollars of those fixed costs converted into positions using coronavirus money, remember? Two years ago, we still got to ask that money later on. So the optics as well as the financial viability of these things, I know they are important and they must be important, but there should be a way around within our system to juggle monies instead of putting a hundred and two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars outright for those positions. That was number one concern I had. I posed that in finance committee too. And the second concern I had was not raising individual, individual employee contributions for health insurance. I know it's a meager amount. It's about, how much was it, forty dollars, forty-five dollars? Is it four dollars a month or something? But it's just the message you send that I give you from one hand and take it out from the other hand. No matter how small that hand is, same logic for fifteen to twenty-one dollars presented by Mr. City Manager. So those are my two things, but fifteen-fifty is required, is essential. And I said to the city manager too, then police officers, we are paying minimum fifty-thousand dollars. So what's wrong with our schoolteachers making the same thing? Education is as important as public safety. Means you cannot pick one over the other. Those were the argument, Dr. Brennan was sitting beside me.
Right.
Am I correct?
You're correct, yeah.
That's what I said to him.
Right.
I don't think he said anything, right?
No.
He was just quiet. But to me, public education is as important as public safety. And so it's time that we should reward and retain and attract quality teachers if we want to reduce the achievement gap.
It could be said in the better than you just did, Dr. Gupta. Yeah, there's a direct correlation between public education, what's going to happen with the virtue of kids and how that's going to impact law enforcement and what they have to deal with. And so I, I certainly support that statement. Dr. Carter, you want to say?
Yes, I know in previous weeks, we've been talking about skin in the game, game. And we do have skin in the game. If we remember that either it was eighteen or nineteen, twenty-eighteen or nineteen, that we, two, that two million and one dollars was taken from our monies for the equity task, oh, I said that again, education task force. And we've never recouped that. So we can, whatever one we go to, we can subtract that two-point-one million. I'll do it, someone else did. I'll, I'll just take that and subtract that out. And also for the, all of these budgets are drafted budgets until the state.
Absolutely.
Because they're a budget.
All the things have to be trued up.
But so how do we make sure like the, the items that was just presented on the slide that we are incorporating that? Because that was an assumption, but I guess we just didn't vote for that last.
The last time we actually did not, they didn't make it this far to the, to the budget, but now they're, they're at least here.
Okay.
Dr. Gupta?
So in that city manager's presentation, he was proposing a three million dollars on top of our baseline last year. But that's why I was asking Dr. Edwards, what's our total ask is? So with this fifteen-fifty proposal, our ask is six-point-five on top of the last year. So there's still a gap of three and a half million dollars from where he's taking us and where we want to be. Does that make sense?
Dr. Carter?
Using the term that's a councilperson used, they have a lot of slush. Slush, slush, a lot of it, you can hear it. So I know that we should be able to get more than whatever they, they're proposing.
Yeah, I was trying to help a young man who's seeking employment and Dr. Gupta had looked on the city's job availabilities and the police officers were coming in fifty-thousand up. And, you know, we, we've gotta do what we need to do to get our teachers where they need to be. And there are a lot of things that I would have wanted to bring in this budget cycle in my last opportunity, but I've just felt in my heart that standing behind this fifteen-fifty is the right thing to do. And so, you want to say?
I just wanted to say that under current inflationary pressures, it's not just you're throwing money away, you're making sure that people will not become homeless just working, you know, because a lot of private companies have raised their wages. There's no other way to contain and sustain employees. So it's an essential requirement. It's, it's, with a nine percent inflation, year after year for last two years, has been a, has been a dent on the daily budgets of hourly employees.
Sure. Dr. Edwards, I would assume that a teacher is as close as you get in front of the students during a school day that's impacting that student's ability to learn. I know there are other factors, but that student is a huge, I mean, that teacher is a huge part of that equation, isn't that correct? Yeah. And I, I just state that because I know that there may be some persons who say, well, we, we just need to get rid of all these people and, and all of these things, but and just deal with what is going to directly impact the classroom. Well, the teachers directly impact the classroom.
And Dr. Edwards, if you could, I know you have done it before, but one more time, please. So when we make the minimum fifty, it lifts everybody up, right? Would you please retrade that, please?
So we do have, we did create pay tables because it was important for our staff to see that, you know, while the starting salary for the entry level teacher would be fifty, what does that mean for me? And we, we took that raise, which I think is a little bit under sixty-five-hundred dollars, I'm not sure of the, off the top of my head, and we just added it to everyone so that our veteran staff would also see an increase in salary and we would not have compression where new teachers would be making fifty thousand and, say, five-year teachers would be making fifty thousand and one dollar.
All right. Some of the school board members who have not spoken yet, I don't know how to interpret your, not commenting at this point, but I do know Dr. Brennan has his hand up. Thank you.
So I'd just like to, since this is such a big project that we do, I'd like to, to make a comment and number one, start by saying that I'm totally in support of the fifteen-dollar increase for hourly salaries and for the fifty-thousand starting wage for teachers, for first-year teachers. I think that's very important. I think we should forge ahead with that. I'll also say I'm a bit of a realist rather than an optimist too, and I think that we clearly all need to know that we're not functioning here in a bubble, that we are gonna work with city council. And the city council piece of this is gonna be very challenging. The current proposal, as Dr. Gupta has pointed out and has been set at various areas, is that they are, would like to raise our amount by three million dollars, but that's based on the fact that the real estate tax goes from a dollar eleven down to a dollar and five cents. They would, that, based on that piece, there's a lot of discussion among city council members that that's not low enough. And if it goes lower, like to ninety-two cents, which is one suggestion, or eighty-five cents, the amount of revenue that's available decreases dramatically. And I think there's gonna be a lot of discussion at city council about this and, and I think we're gonna be tied to that as far as what's gonna happen. So I, I, I think that we need to be aware of that and I think that we need to understand also that we need to be, as I said one of the times, sort of laser focused on what we really want. And I think what we really want is we want the fifteen-dollar minimum wage, we want the fifty thousand for teachers. And I think city council wants to look at us and say, well, what are you doing internally to help with that? You know, are you just coming to ask her for more money or are you doing something else? And I think the fact that we worked on the health, the, health insurance piece of it to remove that seven-hundred-thousand dollar piece was a big step in the right direction and clearly shows them that we're willing to do that. But I have to say, and I've said this once before, I know it's not gonna be very popular currently and I will do the will of the board, but I think that if our real goal is a fifteen-fifty, we should really hammer that because that is the, the gist of our request and it's above the three million dollars. And I think when we add some of these other things, like the employment perks and the, the, the recertification fee, the background check, I think it muddies the water for city council. I think they say, well, look, you know, you're asking for X million dollars for this fifteen-fifty and by the way, you're tagging on, where what's gonna happen to city council is if their, if their amount of revenue is cut, they're looking to public services and say, what are we gonna cut with public services? And we, so I, I think we really need to be strategic about this and realize that if we wanna, if this is our goal, we probably need to hone in on that goal and say, this is what we need to do. So I, I'd like the board to consider saying that's our main goal and, and we, we need to keep the things we need. If we need fuel in the buses to get kids to school, we need to keep that. If we need to do the contract services to keep our employees who we have. But I think some of these other things are relatively small, but when you, when you cut them out, you get about a million dollars back. So it's another sign that we're showing that we're willing to cut some of the things we wanna do in order to make that goal of fifteen-fifty.
I hear some, Dr. Gupta, you want to say?
That exactly was my reason for opposing those three positions in this proposal because they become distractions. It takes the focus away from fifteen-fifty to you got two new positions for what? You only got fifteen other employees, you know what I'm saying? So you're a hundred percent right, I agree with you. They become distractors. That doesn't diminishes the value of that, it's just in light of the current environment, it, it just will become a distractor, will take away the steam or the, the air from the main purpose, which is fifteen-fifty.
Right, thank you, I agree.
All right, Dr. Day?
I, I just wanna echo what Dr. Brennan said. That's, you know, I also feel very strongly that the teachers are the single most important component of the student's education. And so we really need to support them. And the fifteen-fifty plan is our effort to do that, so I'm fully in support of that. But I also am concerned about the aspects that you've brought up. We're, we're asking for more than twice as much than Mr. Benda put in his increase over last year. And I, I, I've said this, I've tried to say it somewhat gently a couple of times before, and I think this is part of what you're saying. What are we willing to give up to get the fifteen-fifty? And we may find our back against the wall on this depending upon what city council does. Now maybe people have been quietly thinking about that because you don't wanna offer, we could give up this and as soon as they hear that, say, oh, they're gonna give up that, sure, we'll count on them giving up that. So I realize there's some reluctance to be forthright about what sacrifices we might have to make, but I'm just making the point that if we really want the fifteen-fifty, we might find ourselves in a situation where we have to find some sacrifices to get there. And so I'm echoing your point. We need to think about in terms of what we are funding, are there things that are lower or higher priority than fifteen-fifty? What things are we willing to let go of and what things are we not willing to let go of?
Dr. Gupta?
So as I mentioned, I don't know, I think you were there at the time, to the city manager, selfish in me, my house assessment has gone up from one-sixty to two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. My house text was eighteen-hundred dollars, so I know it'll go up by about nine-hundred dollars. But selfish in me says, let me save that nine-hundred dollars. But for the greater good, maybe I'm willing to give up that nine, pay that nine-hundred dollars because it'll serve the greater purpose in the community, you see what I'm saying? So I don't think he said anything on that argument. So uh I don't think he said anything on that argument. But if everybody's, so you say what to give up, you know? So as an individual person, am I? Because our teachers are being pushed by localities nearby. They're leaving and that's a human asset. When and when you keep losing human assets, then stop complaining about achievement gap. You know, if you want to tackle those learning losses, achievement gaps, you gotta do stop something to plug that outflow of are the most precious asset. Pay them well so that they are happy and they translate that happiness to our students in terms of greater achievement.
All right, well, others who want to speak, you can certainly do so. Talking out loud, but talking with great uh thought. This is, this is where we end up just about every year, right? And it is my assumption that we have been thinking all along with what we absolutely feel that we need. So I I don't believe that there's anything that is couched within our ASK that we do not literally need. And so with that understanding, we recognize those things that we literally need, that the high priority is the fifteen fifty. I think we're all in agreement with that. And this is going to be delegate, but I want to say to the public, we need every person who's listening that is concerned about public education in Lynchburg to make your thoughts known to council about your thoughts about public education. Uh we can't do their work, and so I wouldn't suggest what they're going to do with task, uh tax rates and so forth. But it would significantly impact public education when these numbers start going down and there's less money, as Dr. Gupta may be alluding, to support public education. And then it gets cut and you create all kind of problems. So uh I'm coming right at you, Dr. Gupta. I I just want to make sure that we understand that what we have before us tonight is the intentional thought of this group over time. And um it will ultimately be supported by local effort to whatever degree. Then we can make determinations on what is what. Dr. Gupta?
I think anybody watching needs to disjoint or disconnect tax discussion with fifteen fifty plan we are proposing here because those are two separate topics. So since we are not tax collectors for real estate tax, public education depends on funding from the city hall. So what we are asking from city hall is to compensate public education, teachers and staff in a reasonable price which they are doing for other city departments. So this, that's what I was talking about, this selfish me, is they're two separate issues. And sometimes people like to connect them together, that if I don't have money, I will not be able to pay you.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to?
Go right ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget minus item eighteen through fourteen. Eight through fourteen, sorry.
Wait a minute, hold it there. So he has a motion on the floor and but he's wanting to make that motion to not include what?
Item eight through fourteen.
So that's student transportation, benefits, recruit, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Student support?
On the benefits, health insurance, we need, otherwise it's bleeding, right? So.
All right, there's a motion, there's a motion.
It's the same way.
I but 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 if I might be able to carry our students appropriately, there is a motion on the floor. It will need a second to stay alive, otherwise the motion will die.
I'd like to make a second so we can have a discussion on the motion.
All right, so there's a second on the motion now, Dr. uh Senna.
I think with regard to the math teacher, some of that funding comes from that FY twenty-four SOL algebra readiness. So that is funded. And and those monies are included if you look this box here. There's special state funding for that to help students.
Why is it part of this?
Because it's an additional thing in our operating budget. But then when you look at the revenue and adjustments, it's included in there. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Is it similar with the English teacher?
The math.
Just for the math.
There is dedicated money for math, to support math. Obviously, we need.
But that number is eighty-one thousand, here is one forty-nine, so those two don't don't add up. A math teacher is eighty-one thousand. You're at the the number you're pointing out to is SOL algebra readiness. That's not.
Well, I'm assuming there are other resources that are going to go into that. But part of the expenditure of that money is this additional faculty person.
This is additional one FTE to serve students.
Correct.
So the way that the um algebra readiness, additional money that we receive, the revenue that is dedicated towards that is they use the um seventh and eighth grade scores to determine the the need there, and that's how that those funds are allocated. So when we had a proposal for an additional math teacher and we're looking at, well, how are we possibly going to pay for it? It's important to point out for full transparency that there is some revenue that is dedicated towards um the funding of algebra readiness. Now, that's not the only algebra that we have. Obviously, we've got middle schools and high schools as well. And that's why we put it on the sheet um so that we'd be fully transparent that some of our revenue is dedicated to specific position.
But that money is not being used to fund that eighty-one thousand dollars of staff position you're asking here.
That that is what we included here. If you look at what the ask is, Dr. Dr. Gupta, the total amount, let's let's go to scenario C and D. The total amount is eleven million dollars of what we needed. What we subtracted out was the revenue and adjustments. So I did subtract out, like we could use this one forty-nine to to pay for everything that is above. So it's it's it is coming out, it is being subtracted out. Otherwise, our ask for city council would be much higher than forty-seven.
What you're saying is you add this and then you take one forty-nine out from there.
The same way as I said, well, this is what it's going to cost for salaries. Here's what the state is going to help with, right? The three, what is it, three point four million, it doesn't include our local part. So just to be transparent, there is some money going towards some of these things that we're asking for.
Because my concern is that readiness may be a variable revenue. It may exist this year, may not exist next year. When you add the FTE, that's a fixed cost for the district. So although you're taking it out one forty-nine this year, but the next year we'll be holding the bag for that one forty-nine if the state doesn't give it to us. You see what I'm saying?
That's where all the revenue the state gives us, everything is up in there.
So so they, right now, they're nice, they're giving us for SOL readiness. But what we did is we added two hundred and fifty thousand in new positions, which we cannot and should not fire those people after the money dries up. So uh the it it's a variable cost versus fixed cost argument.
So and and just again, for full transparency and for all of my building folks who are listening, we were, there were more positions that were asked for than these three. We really, similar to you, we really saw the benefit in pushing fifteen fifty and said, how can we just shrink this down to the absolute, like, we absolutely need these? Um and try to work with, and and you heard our HR department talk about some shifting folks to do, move them around and looking particularly at the elementary schools where we can do that. So I I know this is three positions, but in full transparency, if you talk to building principals, they will tell you that there were many more than three positions that were asked for collectively.
All right, this discussion is still on the floor. There is a motion with a second. Any further questions or discussion concerning the motion that is before us to adopt the operating budget uh for twenty-four minus eight through fourteen uh that you have before you? I do want to indicate that Dr. Brennan and Dr. Gupta, Dr. Gupta more so, would know more about all of these figures and what it means than I will in two or three lifetime. I will not try to debate their wisdom, but I'm going to not support this motion simply because, as I stated, we need these things. And what I think I just heard is that it's a hundred more needed positions beyond these three. At some point, we're going to have to do what we need to do in order for this achievement gap that we talk about to be resolved. I'm ready to fight. I've lost before and I can lose again, but that's my position. Any other discussion on the motion? Dr. Brennan?
So I think that um I was talking to someone recently who isn't, who who is interested in school board, interested in city council, interested in the budgets. He says, I can understand the city budget, I did not understand the school board budget. And this is an intelligent person, and I totally understand why. I mean, I'm not sure I understand the budget still. But I think for this project, for this goal of the fifteen fifty, we need to be clear as we can be as to what we want. We want fifteen fifty. And if 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 people come back on city council or other places saying, well, what is this about the perk for recertification fees, which is a relatively small amount of money? You know, we get distracted by that. You know, I, there's no question that there were many other things that could have been added to this budget. And I greatly appreciate what the administration did to do that. And I and one of the reasons I want to have a discussion, I'm a little nervous about taking out the two hundred dollars for the fuel. I want the kids to get to school. But I agree with the motion as far as I think we need to make it neat and clean. And I think by putting these other smaller things on it, we get distracted and so will everyone else.
Dr. Gupta, and then Dr. Carter, then Mr. Tross.
You know, I've lost so many motions before. Maybe the only guy voting for it, so be it. But to me, uh we, sometimes it's Achilles heel is the right word, we shoot on our own foot. Uh you know, that's how it is, these items look like, that it takes the focus away from the main thing, which is fifteen fifty. Fifteen fifty is what stands out in this budget. This is what this budget is about. Everything else is a fixed cost. Eighty percent human resource cost, it goes same from year to year.
All right, Dr. Carter?
I'm willing to support this budget as is. My and my concern is, well, so how would this look in the scenarios of A, C, A, B, C, and D? If we take out eight through fourteen? But going back, I think, and I want to be like another board member, that we're just going to go forward. But I do want to support this budget. And any anything that we send over there is a distraction. Even the fifteen fifty is going to be a distraction. Everything appears to be a distraction when it comes to us um achieving our goals. So I'd say let them say what they want to say, give us what they want to give us, and then we can come back and do some more work.
Mr. Tross?
I agree with the sentiment of the motion um in in order to really get our priority, which is the fifteen fifty, which really ultimately feeds into one of my number one priorities that is shared amongst the board is dealing with the achievement gap. Not sure it's, I'm not sure I'd go to that same extent. I'm concerned about the fuel allocation money and things of that nature. But I definitely, I agree with the sentiment of the motion, clean it up, lean it up so that we're at the bare minimum of our of our ask to achieve the goal of fifteen fifty. I think it's, I I agree with the sentiment.
I think I'm hearing maybe from a couple of board members that maybe the maker of the motion may want to exercise or remove item um uh eight from your, or you can keep it in there. Now, you keep nine through whatever the rest of.
My motion will still fail, so.
I don't know, I don't know that at all, Gupta.
I'd be a little more optimistic.
And is, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute, that's staying order, get the floor is yours, Mr. Tross.
And is is there a, I mean, I certainly, there's an unknown in that fuel allocation cost. Fuel can go up, fuel can go down. I mean, do we ever look at hedging on energy prices? I mean, do we do any of that? Buying futures or, I mean, I don't know if we do that or not.
Probably not.
Okay.
There are limitations um for what uh public agencies can do particularly, and then same thing with investments. So some of the cash is invested, um certain places over at the city, uh but it's very, very limited what we're allowed to do.
Thank you.
All right, who's next, Dr. Day?
Go ahead, Dr. Day. So um the proposal was to remove lines.
Eight through fourteen.
Eight through fourteen. Those lines total to five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars and nine hundred and seven, which is just a little bit more than half of a million. So in terms of the dollar amounts we're talking about here, it's not a lot. I kind of think that the optical value of this may be more important than the dollar amount. That, you know, as I said a few minutes ago, I I'm concerned that we might be seen as not being willing to give up much to to ask for fifteen fifty. And I wonder, and I think this is part of your reasoning, that we can say, look, we're we're sacrificing some things that are also very important to us. And the other aspect of it is, you know, suppose we take out the the student trans, the the fuel costs. Well, isn't it true that what typically happens, if we find ourselves short in one area, we can move some funds around from one category to another? And that I expect happens every year, doesn't it, to some extent? So even if we took this out and fuel costs ended up being more than that we needed some of that two hundred thousand, chances are we'd be able to find a way to cover where where some other aspect of the budget came in less than what we budgeted for. So I think I think we would manage. That's what I'm speculating, I don't, none of us know the future. I'm, I guess I'm just making the case that I think the 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 optical value of this, as I'm calling it, may be the most important, more important than the dollar amounts.
And and nothing is stopping us from scenario C to A to B to D. So that's a flexibility in the budget which can compensate. But I'm using Dr. Nillis, if he's reading. Remember, he used to work the optics.
That's right.
Is very important. And so.
You wonder why I use Nillis, you say stop using.
I know.
All the time.
That's true.
So we're leaving in the seven hundred thousand.
That's all, okay, that's already in.
All right, now, let me, because I'm overspeaking, but I I don't want to undervalue Dr. Carter's statement. And I think, I mean, that that both sides are really tight on this, the optical piece. But but my experience has been that we have been intentional every year of optically saying, I mean, I can give you examples of where the superintendent found monies and did this. It doesn't appease an animal that is saying, ah, if you did that, then there's probably this and there's that. And we never get where we need to get. Even the next budget iteration cycle of this discussion for the incoming board, it's going to always be the same. And our kids are suffering because there are monies used for other things that really could help provide the kind of education that would make our law enforcement individuals in a better place because the thoughts of our citizens would be better. The quality of education that a person has directly manifests in their behavior. So I am not suggesting that my colleagues, I love all seven of them, uh animals. So nobody go and say that I said, I'm going to say it again, that's not what I was saying. I'm just saying there's this, this this kind of underlying reality. And so when you're trying to appease, I don't think there's ever any stop to that process. These are needs that have been presented to us over time that we've had opportunities to to reduce things before. And I am not going to support the motion. Is there any further, Dr. Brennan?
So I I agree with Dr. Day. I really think this is optics is what we're talking about. I think it's very important. I think if we really want to move the needle for the achievement gap, for helping children, it's getting fifteen dollars per hour for our for hourly page, hourly employees and and the fifty thousand for our first-year teachers. That is going to move the needle. That's what's going to work. And I think that's the message we need to give to the city council. So I am in favor of this motion for that reason. And I also predict we're going to see this budget again after it goes to city council. So we will have another shot at it.
Any further discussion on the motion? All right, Dr. Gupta has put a powerful uh motion on the floor for us to approve the operating budget FY twenty-four for Lynchburg City School.
If it's powerful, then you're supporting it.
It is powerful or two. I I'm not, I'm not uh taking away. I'm not, I'm not taking away this power for it. It was seconded by Dr. Brennan. And so if you will vote yes, you are in favor of the motion which would eliminate eight through 14. Dr. Day's math is saying that'll be about $573,907 of optics, you know, maybe later discussion. If you vote no, that means that you are not in favor of the motion, which would mean we would come back with another motion relative to a proposed operating budget to take over. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School board member, Ms. Preston?
No.
School board member, Mr. Tross?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Sinha?
No.
School board member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Coleman?
No.
School board member, Dr. Coleman, I'm Carter.
No.
School board member, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Day?
There's eight of us.
It doesn't matter, does it? If I say yes, it's a tie vote and it fails. If I say no, it fails. So I'll say yes, but it fails.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Dr. Day is really.
Yeah, but it wasn't.
All right, but I'm going to let the clerk officially announce the result, please.
Question fails for the four.
All right, we're back to a need for a motion. Now, this is really a great board here. You know, we, it is what it is. So now we're back in need of a motion. Madam Clerk, I mean, Dr. Carter.
I move that we accept the budget that's presented. We're going to be back here again anyway.
All right, likewise, if there's no second, that motion will not have life, and it will die.
Second.
All right, so it's been moved by Dr. Carter, seconded by Ms. Preston, that we would approve the FY '24 LCS operating budget proposal inclusive of all 14 items here. All right, further discussion, Dr. Gupta?
So I'm going to vote no for it, because I know we are setting ourselves for a failure. I do support 1550. It's essential, it's required, and needs to be done. But not the peripheral stuff around it. So, my vote would be no. Just wanted to clarify that no doesn't mean no for 1550.
Right.
Well said. All right, further discussion?
You may have to help me with the parliamentary procedure here, but I would like to propose a substitute motion.
You can.
Which would be to remove item or lines eight through 12, but retain lines 13 and 14.
All right. A main motion can be amended two times, and so this would be only the first amendment to the main motion on the floor. So if there is a second to Dr. Day's amended motion to take out eight through 12 and leave 13 and 14, if there's a second, then we would vote on whether or not we want to amend the main motion to that.
I second.
All right. And now we have a second, and now we are having discussion on the amendment.
And so I think I get to speak first since I proposed the motion. That would bring the savings down to $330,400. So it would retain more than half of the monetary value, but as we've already said, the numbers are not.
Right.
The number of dollars is not important, but it would have at least some of the optical value that you.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
It defies the logic of optics you presented before, because you got three new positions being still retained. You're adding more fixed costs.
Except the teaching position.
But it means if she adds 50 more teaching positions, it's good to go for it, you know? So I would vote no for this motion.
Okay, further discussion on the amendment?
And I would vote yes.
We're only voting considering whether to change the motion. We're not voting to approve or disapprove of the motion.
We're voting on the amendment.
Right.
The amendment would then become a part of the main motion.
Right, okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
It's fine. I agree with the motion, the amendment, based upon, and I understand Dr. Gupta's position, but I've heard from Dr. Carter that these are essential, essential teaching positions, not a 50, that there probably are 50 others that we'd like to have. So this is a very basic, the very basic alternate positions for teachers. It's still, we're showing, we're showing, I think in good faith, we are just finding any place we can to cut from an optics standpoint, even though the dollars aren't significant in the grand scheme of things, is still, we're really pushing the envelope, trying to find savings so that we can ultimately have the 1550 for our teachers and staff.
All right, any other discussion? I would like to know, because we could keep, not necessarily, could only amend the main motion for this on the main motion two times. But I am interested, we just had a four-four vote. Does anyone from the administration want to talk to us about whether or not this transportation issue, with some of you raised earlier concerns, but the perks? What is that going to say to a teacher, and that say to a teacher? And if you don't want to answer, that's fine, but I'm trying to help the process, because we could keep going with these four-four votes for a while.
Sure, I can speak to that. So, from time to time, we have competing priorities, right? One of them is a paycheck priority. One of them is a morale priority. And we've heard things with staff, like the little things that matter. The day of wellness, while it didn't increase anybody's paycheck, it really went over well with staff, that we stopped, we appreciated them, we did a little thing that mattered. These things, as Dr. Carter brought up, were on the budget for last year, when we proposed last year's budget. And we thought, these are just little things that might go a long way to just say, "You matter." And they're not, they are very costly in dollar amount, but the lasting effect would be great. And we see that when we're doing like recertifications. They have to pay upfront before they get their licensure and that whole process, the background checks as well, they also have to pay. So those, that was some of the motivation. The bereavement days, and these are all things that came from staff. So another, like, we meet with people, we ask them to give budget input, and they're like, "Here's some little things you can do." The bereavement, particularly for those folks who have to travel, one of the things that they said was, "I get three days. I spend a day on the road, I go to the funeral the day of, and I have to get back on the road. I don't really get the time with my family. Five days would be a little bit better than three days, if that's possible." And so we said we would consider that, and we brought that to the school board.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Dr. Carter?
Are we not able to allocate funds to this like we do for like the buses and some other items, when we find that we have more of a surplus here or there?
Well, here's the real challenge. So here's hopeful thinking. We're raising the teacher salary so we can fill vacant positions. Where have we had the excess money in the vacant positions that had the lower teacher salary? So when we say things like, "Oh, well, we've always been able to find a position," well, when we're without a math teacher for the first three months of school, there's the money. But if we make Lynchburg City more attractive, where people do want to come, and then we have less vacancies, which is less, you know, free money to, not free money, I should say, less available money to do some other things. So, we're a little nervous about that, knowing that, you know, historically, we've had some openings that have taken some time to fill. The other thing is, you know, Dr. Coleman alluded to this, we have been, I have been, my five years here, in a budget struggle, in my five years, the budget's gone down since I've been superintendent, and I can't think of anything else that's gone down. Inflation's gone up, gas has gone up, everything is going up, 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 yet we have still managed to function while our revenues, our total revenue has gone down. And that's really been, you know, you say, "Well, what are you sacrificing?" One of the things was when we did see we had some contingencies, and we're like, "Ooh, we don't necessarily need all these contingencies. Let's give that up." A big thing that we were doing, you know, with fund balance, is let's use fund balance to help the city by doing CIP projects and putting money back in there. Let's, let's do some things to help out. But at some point, we get to a point where, "What else am I supposed to be taking?" Because we're really crunched, especially as things continue to go up, and we're not generating any taxable revenue on our own. So, and I say that with all due respect, because, you know, if you were to have the building principals all sitting there, and they said, "This total need that I totaled up to be about $11 million with the 1550, even if you took that away, we would probably still be at $11 million with what they were requesting for their buildings." And I'm asking them to make sacrifices. We have asked them to make sacrifices so we can push some of the stuff forward, so.
All right, Dr. Day, you want to say?
Do you think there will be a point in this whole discussion when the case that you've just made can be made to city council? That you can say, "We have foregone a number of things to get here?" I think that's, that's, that's the optics again. I think that's, that's my motive for considering this kind of a motion, is to be able to say, "We know we're asking a lot, and we're giving up a lot to try to get here." I think we need to be able to make that case to them. If we're asking for as much more than they probably initially are prepared to spend, we need to have, we need to be able to make that case.
Dr. Day, I appreciate, oh, you're asking. Go ahead.
I'm interested in what you were about to say.
What I just wanted to say is that I appreciate what you just said, because for me philosophically, I get the feeling that there's this thought, that we've got all of this unnecessary request, and people that aren't needed to get kids where they need to be. And the few times I get to go in those schools, I would just have to applaud administrators, teachers, they are dealing with everything under the sun, and most of us couldn't deal with it for two minutes. And if you have a death, I just had my father to leave a couple of years ago, it took me two and a half weeks to get myself together. And then you've got to go in front of these kids and function appropriately. And so I'm afraid that there's the optic that we're over here with a whole bunch of fluff, unnecessary positions, people don't know what they're doing, we're just asking for pie in the sky, and persons get away with saying, "That's the case," and therefore saying that education can make do on its own, tighten up your straps, because you don't know what you're doing. And I cannot support that optic, and I will not, because I think it ends nowhere, because we have been kind. Hasn't nobody been more kind than I've tried to be in my presentations in this administration, and it's still, cut, 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 cut. So, but now, back to the main motion. The main motion was to approve the operating budget as it is. Dr. Day amended that, and he wants us to now consider, with a second, that we would do the budget without having eight through 12 included. Is there any further discussion on his amendment? All right, so if you are in favor of the amendment, we still have to go back to the main motion, because the amendment would become a part of the main motion, that the amendment would say that we would amend the main motion to say, support the operating budget discussion without including eight through 12. All right, Madam Clerk, if you support that, say yes. If you don't, say no.
Say that again.
Okay, I'm trying to say it the best I know how. The amendment was to amend your main motion of the total operating budget as it is, to remove items eight through 12. And so that was seconded. So if you're in support of it, then you say yes. If you're not in support, you say no. If the motion passes, then we go back to the main motion now being to accept the operating budget minus eight through 12.
If that motion fails, then go back.
If it fails, we're still on the same main motion.
Right.
Which is supported in total.
Okay.
Wait, okay, say that again.
Right. If the amendment fails, you're back to the main motion as is. If it passes, the main motion is amended, and we got to vote on that amended main motion.
May I try to rephrase it also?
You can.
If it's helpful.
Yeah.
What we're about to vote on is whether to change your motion. The change would be to remove ones eight through 12. So if you, if you want that change, you should vote yes. If you don't want that change, which would leave your motion intact, you vote no.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School board member, Ms. Preston?
No.
School board member, Mr. Tross?
Yes.
School board member, Dr. Sinha?
No.
School board member, Dr. Brennan?
No.
School board member, Dr. Coleman?
No.
School board member, Dr. Carter?
No.
School board member, Dr. Gupta?
No.
School board member, Dr. Day?
Yes.
So now we're back to the.
So I failed worse than you did.
Okay. Oh, Lord. So now we're back to Dr. Carter's main motion that was seconded to support the operating budget as presented tonight. Is there any further questions or discussion on the main motion? All right, Dr. Sinha?
Just, just one point to hopefully appease Dr. Gupta. You know, I see the employee perk, the bereavement days, the background check, the recertification fees, as similar to your assertion that, that $5, $10 increase to our 800 or so employees who are on the single plan, to just cover that for them, because it's, in terms of the whole budget, not large. And these things like this can matter a lot for a small, a relatively small price. So that, that's basically why I voted no.
Those things, when you talk about health insurance, it's hidden in an item which is not visible. But these items are visible right now.
But they're part of teacher retention.
I know, but.
All that other stuff.
We have, in a $106 million budget, we should have some flexibility to be able to come out with this much money later on if needed. If we think it's really needed, essential, we should have that much maneuvering around to be able to achieve that. So I'm not diminishing the value of it. What I'm saying is it takes the attention away from the main focus, which is 1550.
Sir, Dr. Carter?
That's why in previous years, I always voted for us not to increase the health contributions of the, of the employees, because we always were able to find that, but now we're getting to, it may be even more difficult to do that. And that's our number one thing, to make sure that we have a balanced budget, though it may be more difficult to try to find monies.
Right. Because if we're, if I'm underst, I'm sorry. If we're choosing scenario D, then we're, we're counting on coming up with that $700,000 somewhere, so that we're not in the red with our health expenses, so that we're not short $700,000 at the end of the year, between what comes in, in premiums, and what goes out as claims. That's a lot of money to come up with, in a very lean budget.
There needs to be a detailed discussion next year, as we talked about in finance, about healthcare.
I agree.
We plan, we have, how we manage it, because now you're opening me up, we spent $384,000 paying our share, whole share of health insurance for all these ancillary units, which no other district who's benefited from this is pitching in there. We charge rent on a building less than what we are paying for the buildings ourselves to put our people in there, you know? And we sign lease agreements with a clause that will be providing health insurance benefits. I can go on and on, you know? The things which needs to be fixed going forward, and, but I didn't bring them up because it, again, distracts from the main item.
Again, and I agree with all of that, and we have to do, do diligence on that to bring, to keep our expenses where they belong for our staff and our employees, because these other entities still benefit from other services that we provide. So, asking them to pay their fair share on something that is so expensive for us. But until that happens, we still have this, what we anticipate to be this $700,000 shortfall in what we collect in premiums, and what is likely to go. And I would note that the past three years are. And I would note that the past three years, our claims, what's going out, have been higher than what's been projected. So it could be more than seven hundred thousand. We're trying to be responsible and only ask for what we anticipate we'll need, but.
And I'm speaking like an ignorant man because I've not seen the data. But that may be the leakage in your ancillary unit benefits. We don't know yet, you see what I'm saying? Where you are charging very little premium, but your outflow is much higher. The loss ratio, what they call in a insurance angle, is more than one. You know, more, loss ratio is what you collect in premiums and what you pay out. So our own employees may be loss ratio of eighty percent, but those ancillary units may be two hundred. I don't know. So those are the examinations we need.
Exactly, and we had, just have to look at how we're using services and if there are other ways we can modify, uh, the way people use healthcare services that would lower the cost of providing healthcare, healthcare. And I'm totally with Dr. Brennan, who's been asking for several years to get that kind of detail, to look at areas of savings and other alternatives we can do to provide the same level of service but not spend as much.
Dr. Edwards, I agree with you. We ask for cuts all the time, but if I'm a private business operating out there in the current environment, I don't have flexibility to raise prices after a certain point uh, because then I have potential to lose customers. But in public bodies, that's not the case, right? You basically ask for more influx of revenue in there, which private businesses don't have. But they're all, they're all struggling with that in the current environment. The cost of operating businesses is going up, and the revenue collection is flat or shrinking. And it's the external environmental factors.
And, and the difference between us and a business is we have a mandate to educate our.
We do, and then, then the question comes, should we look at some efficiencies we can achieve within the system? At least, uh, whatever little bit I know. Again, I'm, you're opening me up now to say, then, then you'll say Gupta is all negative. I have not heard a discussion about efficiencies in the system. That may have happened in the back door, but I have not heard them, so.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta, Dr. Senha. Any further questions or discussion on the main motion to approve the budget as presented, proposed budget?
Okay, I'm gonna speak like a teacher now. I want to know that because I sacrifice my time, my extra resources to operate in this classroom, to make sure that students are taught, that they are mentored, that they're given the time and attention that they need because of the circumstance in which they find themselves in life, in life. I want to know that somebody is gonna stand for me in the same way. And if that means that we gotta change the budget around to make sure that I can save a little bit of money on my, on my insurance, I want to know somebody's gonna do that. Now, as a teacher, I'm not gonna stop doing what's right in my classroom because you didn't do it, but I also don't want you to stop doing what's right in this room because you don't, because somebody's gonna disagree with it. That's where I sit.
Wow, thank you, School Board Member Gloria Preston. All right, any further questions or discussion on the motion? Uh, here and now, Madam Clerk, just to restate, uh, you are now voting on the main motion to support the FY twenty-four LCS operating budget proposal, uh, at this time. Madam Clerk, please call the roll, yes or no?
School board member Ms. Preston?
Yes.
School board member Mr. Tros?
No.
School board member Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Brennan?
No.
School board member Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Gupta?
You know, Ms. Preston, you brought me disclosed, and I'm going to vote no.
School board member Mr. Day, Dr. Day? Motion passes five to four. Me five, excuse me.
Five to three.
Five to three.
All right, listen, everybody, we're all winners tonight because this is for the kids. I think everybody's comments is going to prove to be valuable. And we're just going to work through this and see how it goes. Uh, I want to give this board a hand. You all deal with, we deal with delicate issues professionally, respectfully, and, uh, trying to do what we need to do to advocate. Uh, however this vote had gone, all of us need to support what we are now pushing and do all we can do, uh, as this goes before council. So even though it wouldn't be appropriate for me to tell you or to give yourselves a hand, just know that the atmosphere is giving you a hand. All right, C five, um, now, I know you all don't want to discuss this for very, very long now at this point after that, but, uh, we have some real pressing matters, advisory groups that need direction, not later, but now, uh, matters before us when it relates to even how we operate with our discipline committee, et cetera. So we, we really need a retreat as quickly as possible so it can be meaningful as possible, uh, up through the end of June and certainly, uh, for the next board. Dr. Edwards, would you like to add anything else to what I just said?
Nope, you've said it all.
All right, so, Dr. Gupta.
You know, you mentioned the word discipline here. And what I'd like to do, or maybe have during the retreat, a out-of-the-box or a different model for discipline committee meetings we have. We, as a board, almost meet every Thursday, and I looked around, and I found Rono County School Board, uh, has what they call a discipline rev- review team, DRT, which meets when a student is expelled for more than ten days. And school board meets only when a student is expelled, is out there to be expelled. So here, we are meeting for three sixty-four days or more, but there, they do it only for expulsion cases. So it's basically the people on the ground know more, better, and then the school board members. So, uh, that could be a model. We need to look at it, discuss it. Um, I, I reached out to, um, I shared that with you, and I have that PowerPoint slide they have. I can send it out to Ms. Day, and she can forward it, uh, from Rono County.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta, so noted. Uh, Dr. Carter?
Just, uh, dr- speaking on, uh, piggybacking on Dr. Gupta, I know we talked about, when I first came, we didn't do disciplinary committee meetings. It happened, I think, about two years later. And I, and as we were talking, I think it was because we had the.
OCR.
OCR in, in place. And that was one of the suggestions, is that the board started looking at that. And maybe some of the board members that were, that are not here may be able to tell me if I'm incorrect about that. Let me know. But I think that was the reason why, and it's been going on since then.
OCR Office of Civil Rights, and what we needed to do to deal with some of the disparities that were, um, before us at that time. Uh, we're not under OCR right now, and so it's all up for discussion. I think what we're fishing around for now is a date that would work. And, uh, Madam Clerk, do you have anything to bring to the table on that? In terms of, um, have we sent out anything searching a date? I know Dr. Edwards suggested a few days.
There was an email.
I sent a email.
Yeah.
What?
No response.
I'm sorry.
I haven't responded.
I, I didn't, I saw the.
Their vacation.
Yeah, so, Dr. Edwards, you had one single date which was left out, right?
Uh, yeah, either the Saturday or twenty-second, I think, was the date that we were trying to avoid the, the bookend Saturdays of the, uh, spring break, just to allow folks to.
And the following Saturdays, our graduation thing even starts.
If we were gonna do a Saturday.
Right.
The available Saturday.
So is the twenty-second what everybody's looking at? Is that?
I, I cannot do the twenty-second.
Well, we can't do it then. We can't do it on twenty-second.
Unless you do it without me.
No, we can't do it.
Is this you, of March or April?
April.
I mean, I'm ready, let's do it. I'm open tomorrow.
Even though we are not, we're not imposed by VSBA regulations, I don't think this retreat will have any value if all nine of us are not present. And so I think we gotta fish around. The twenty-second is not gonna work for Dr. Day, so in my personal opinion, it doesn't work for the group.
About twenty-first, the Friday?
Uh, the Friday to twenty-first, what about that?
I, again, I'm out of town, the twenty-first through the twenty-eighth.
And we can't do the twenty-ninth? Is that what you said?
I, I might be back on the twenty-ninth, I don't know.
Yeah, we, I don't want to.
Oh, the day in the, or what is it?
Education Block Party from ten to twelve.
Unless we wanted to do it after twelve.
But there's another event on the twenty-ninth of April also.
I, I don't know for sure yet whether I'm not, whether or not I'm gonna be back on the twenty-ninth. That's a maybe for me, I'll know in a few days.
Is there anything that we can do before the twenty-second, twenty-first, twenty of those days? Is it?
Could we do it in an evening? I, I, I'm, I'm okay for any evening.
I can do it. Is it a day that works for?
How long does this typically last? I mean, are we talking?
How many hours we think you need, Dr. Edwards? We want to have more than pizza that night, Madam Clerk.
I'm good with pizza, Madam Clerk.
I give you a piece of two.
There's a lot of topics that you suggested here.
But this is the work of the board, right? Most of these topics do not require, um, like our first retreat, which was all of everybody coming. Uh, you certainly need some of us, but it's the work of the board. So I would say at least three hours if you're gonna stay focused on topic and be prepared outcomes.
I can sacrifice three hours. We just need to find a common date that works.
What about the twenty-fifth, the Tuesday?
I'm sorry, twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth of April.
I'm not here.
That week's out.
You said that, didn't you?
Yeah.
Earlier week, can we do that sometime during the week of April seventeenth? Some, is that spring break or something?
For me, as long as it's not Friday.
Um, some of us are gonna be out all day on the seventeenth for fiscal governance training.
Right. And that's a lot, and I feel for you because you gotta do the same thing on the twenty-eighth, right? Or whatever day it is when we come back.
And then work session on the eighteenth.
You got a work session on the eighteenth, right?
What about the first Saturday in May, is that two?
No, we can't do the Saturday, May, that's graduation. Oh, I, I mean, I can't.
Does the twentieth work? April twentieth?
Yeah.
Does April twentieth work?
He's out, you're out.
I could do April twentieth.
In the evening.
In the evening.
Yeah, that's a, um, now, what we have, that's a Monday, Tuesday. Will we have, will we have a discipline meeting problem that night?
Are you asking me? I predict no one is gonna need a discipline here.
There weren't already scheduled for that night.
There would be not on the thirteenth because that's spring break week, but it will be one on, well, if there is needed, it will be one on the twentieth.
What about the nineteenth?
You don't want to be bothered, I shouldn't ask you that way, on this spring break, do you?
Nineteenth's okay also for me.
I'm physically here.
Nineteenth works for me, for, I'm available nineteenth.
All right, now, we're on the Wednesday, the nineteenth, how about that? That's fine with me.
I could do that.
I could do that, too.
Anyone cannot do the nineteenth. If I'm, if we do three hours, are we saying five to eight or six to nine? Five to eight work? I mean, you're here to, you're, you're here to eight now, so it's about the same time.
Five to eight on the nineteenth?
All right, April nineteenth, uh, five to eight.
So we have a work session on the eighth? Oh, no, never mind.
It, it's looking like that every week now.
Work session on the eighteenth. Did they come back for eight on the nineteenth? That's two nights in a row.
Why don't we, why don't we just make it a sleepover on the eighteenth?
So we said five to eight, is that what you said?
No, that's two.
That's the suggestion, five to eight on the eighteenth, on the nineteenth.
And what did you say, Dr. Senha, it's happening on the twenty?
On the eighteenth, we have a school board work session.
Right, mhm. What's happening on the twentieth?
Discipline.
Discipline Committee.
Why don't we make the work session a retreat?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Your win.
We are here for three hours.
We're supposed to be on our.
What's on the agenda for that work session?
We would abandon, we would have to abandon the agenda and any necessary action item that might come before.
If there's absolute necessary action item, you can still take it on. It's a public meeting.
I believe it's gifted education and, and look in one of my, it's on me. So we're saying eighteen from five days?
It could be, I don't have any problem with that either.
It'll work.
We almost finished, all this is very important.
It's more difficult than finding a wedding date.
Too many people getting married.
I mean, I can take whatever's on the work session agenda and just.
Push it around.
Just put it around.
Uh, because of calendar integrity and time and energy, uh, I think that's a, a wise statement. So let's do the eighteenth, that'll be our retreat, retreat work sessionish type of thing, okay? All right, thank you all very much. Dr., Madam Clerk, if you could so note that and make sure that everybody gets, um, that will, uh, Dr. Brennan and I, along with everybody's input, would just fine tune the agenda. I think Dr. Edwards has already given us enough topics to be covered in that period of time, but just to make sure. All right, uh, D, uh, is, uh, policy, uh, discussion here. And rather than reading all that, Dr. Edwards, go right ahead.
Okay, um, so we have to, uh, every two years, we visit our LCS, uh, S R O M O U with the Police Department, um, and I put the policy there. There's nothing for you to do with the policy, I just put it so that people can reference why we're doing what we're doing. What you have, um, what's listed in the agenda is the, the result of all of your feedback, the community feedback from the survey, um, feedback from internal staff members, feedback from the Police Department, the Police Chief, um, as to the revisions. And you'll see some strike-throughs, some suggestions, some edits. You also have a hard copy. Um, at some point, we are going to have to approve this. That is definitely not tonight, but we wanted to bring it back to the public to say, you know, here are, um, the comments that we collected so far and what your thoughts are. So this will be on a later agenda for approval, but we do need to take some time to just kind of go through it and read through it, which does not have to be too.
So if we have questions, we can present them.
Exactly, yes.
Thank you, uh, thank you for information, uh, for tonight, thank you. Under informational items, then, uh, we're looking forward to seeing everyone on the twenty-eighth. Uh, you see the next school board meeting on the fourth, spring break, so noted, and I hope everybody will have a great time doing that. And then on April the eighteenth, we're gonna now have our school board retreat and any, uh, items that we have to deal with, we will. All right, with that in mind, the meeting is adjourned.